Hello and welcome to our Tuesday evening council meeting. We have interim Police Chief Higgins here and he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to begin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Council of Ward 3.
And I understand we have minutes?
We do. The minutes of the September 16th meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glantz?
Second.
Slanted by Counselor Chittam. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 5.
I'm sorry, these are the wrong sheets. I apologize.
This is not good. Okay, Counsel from Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Uh, Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Motion passed, my vote is 7 to 0.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, we are now up to public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record and please indicate if you are Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the City Council, all questions should be directed to the mayor who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the City Council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the City Administration Office.
Good evening, Zoe Lidstrom, Ward 5. I just wanted to point out to administration and, I guess, the city webmaster that I was looking for a press release the other day, which would have been a press release put out in the last couple of days, or last week certainly, but all I could find on the press releases page was archives from 2021 through 2024. So if they're out there, I don't know how to find them and just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Ronnie Parity, Ward 6. Two things. One is Mattel School. I'm really, I just heard tonight, it might be in December, but I'm not sure. I'm really, you know, I've been working at this since 2019, Mattel School, and I'm really upset about that. My second thing I'm upset, I went by the park that my husband is named after. Okay, the Mark Parity Park, it's in back, Italian Bakery, in case anybody doesn't know. The door, the gate, was broken like somebody had mashed into it. No one is taking care of that park. How come there's certain parks that people take care of in Lewiston and other parks that they don't take care of? I'm really, my husband did a lot of work for the city of Lewiston and Kathy, Kathy's the only one that knows that from the staff. Brian O'Malley knows a little bit, but it's ashamed. And then I had to buy the sign for the park. Do you realize that? And then I look at Mike McGraw's park, which I have nothing against Mike McGraw's park, and that's always clean, it's always nice looking and everything else, and then I go by and see, and then there's a tiny sign, which I bought because the first sign was full of bullet holes, or BB guns, whatever. What is wrong? How come we treat some property okay and other people? Who do you have to be in this town to get respect and everything? And I just feel like my husband did a lot for the city and there's people, there's two people I know that know, and that's Kathy and that's Susan Longchamp, that know what he did when he was back. And he always was friendly, he never talked about anybody or put people down, which I see with a lot of people in this city. So let's, let's, please clean up the parks, all of them, no matter who they're named after, because George Ricker Park always looks nice, which I have nothing against George Ricker because he was a friend of mine too. So let's, let's do something. And Mattel School, please, the seniors are asking me, how come? How come? And everything. We have all the downtown houses being built, but we don't have something for seniors being built. Thank you.
Matthew Wegrin, Ward 4. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to my public comment tonight to the council and I hope you take it to heart. I'd like to remind you, the council, that we, the public, like you, receive the agenda packet on Thursday and we can download it. This allows us all time to read, do our homework, arrive here ready to make our arguments on issues pro and con on any given item. I have no issue if because of the pro and con arguments, there becomes minor changes to a given item. Yet at the last meeting, we were handed this completely rewritten business license ordinance with syringe program at the time when it came up. I hope you all can say that none of you but Counselor Chittam knew it was coming until it was handed out, because if not, you all failed transparency. And we expect that from you. How are we supposed to be able to prepare for massive changes to what the public has no idea is coming? I can't read this while listening to all the points being made by you, the public, and be able to counterpoint it. If it was to be brought up for voting, it should have been sent to Kathy so she could have sent it out as an amended agenda item, like she did this week with 9B. Otherwise, as I've said here before, what you should be voting on is what is in the packet with only minor changes. It's only fair and transparency to the citizens and the taxpayers so they all have the ability to see what the planned item was to be voted on. Otherwise, we now have to expect each and every item can and will be massively changed from the listed packet. So in the future, don't be surprised if we start pulling consent agenda items and asking massive questions during what are routine public hearings, because this is what happens when you all fail transparency for the government body. Now on a lighter subject, there were many events happened over the past few days. Let me quickly touch on a few of them. The first was the Lewiston Live Event. Joe, let me say you pulled together a nice first-time event for here in Lewiston, and I know the next one will be bigger and better. Well done. The Green Ladel had on Saturday an open house that showed off how talented our kids really are. They rocked that program. And finally, Safe Voices held their Lewiston event Monday for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It was nice to see Counselors Longchamp and Soul out there to support the victims of domestic abuse along with our mayor. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Jen Hogan and I'm the President/CEO for Community Credit Union located at 144 Pine Street here in Lewiston. Last week, I mailed letters to the city administrator, the head of code enforcement, the mayor, and each member of the city council. These letters outline my growing concerns about the safety of our downtown and included a summary of feedback gathered directly from our staff, people who live and work in this community every day. I also shared a copy of the op-ed that I authored and published in the Sun Journal titled "A Safer Lewiston Starts With All Of Us Including City Hall." No one should have to go to work every day afraid for their lives. They shouldn't have to think about whether it's safe to walk to their car at lunch or when they're leaving at the end of the day. Yet that's how many of my employees and Community Credit Union members feel. During a recent staff meeting focused on conditions around our Lewiston locations, employees shared that they are increasingly fearful, not only because of the rise in violent drug activity and loitering, but also because of what lies ahead if we continue down this same path. I don't think anyone here would deny knowing what our city's challenges are: drugs, discarded needles, persistent poverty, mental health crises, drive-by shootings, just to name a few. We all see it, we all know it, yet very little is being done to truly address it. With the city's decision to add a low-barrier shelter, I want to be clear that I support the need for a shelter. Homelessness must be addressed in Lewiston. My concern is implementation. In this particular neighborhood, also already facing crime and instability, we need a plan that works for everyone. A shelter here will bring added challenges unless we put in place extra safety measures, stronger partnerships, and real communication with the neighborhood. My goal is to raise awareness for the very real safety and crime issues in this neighborhood and make sure that this shelter can achieve its mission in providing safe housing for those in need without overwhelming the area around it. So I ask, what steps has the city taken to ensure that the challenges we're already facing are being effectively addressed and that the additional challenges a low-barrier shelter will bring are fully understood and accounted for? The credit union is committed to Lewiston. In 2013, we considered leaving Pine Street, but we chose to stay. We chose to invest, be a part of the solution, and believe in this community. But we cannot do this alone. Businesses like ours are being forced to make difficult decisions because not enough is being done to address the ongoing challenges downtown. As our city faces these urgent issues, we respectfully call upon the city of Lewiston to make public safety its top priority visibly and vocally, communicate clearly with residents and businesses about safety plans, progress, and challenges, demonstrate a coordinated response that brings together law enforcement, public health, and community partners, and provide businesses and residents with the confidence that Lewiston is not only responding to crisis, but leading efforts to restore public safety instability. Lewiston deserves leadership that is proactive, transparent, and collaborative, leadership that works with the community to make our city safer for everyone. Thank you.
That was incredible. Jen, my name is Wayne Cos. I founded the Main Music Awards, Main Music Awards Hall of Fame, Florida Music Awards Hall of Fame. I'm an international, global reporter. What I had here is when I came here to help my dad with a VA contract, my brother ended up taking our money and was totally assisted by the Lewiston Police, Crystal LeChance.
Sorry, we can't talk about personnel matters here. We also cannot name city employees. So if you want to, I'm going to ask you to cut your comments short and you will refer, if the audience could please be quiet, that would be great.
So I-
Excuse me. You can continue your comments, but we cannot talk about city employees or personnel matter. You can feel free to re, uh, to reach out to our city administrator.
To an administrator?
All personnel complaints should be made to city administration.
For five months, I've been looking to meet with a specific city manager and I've been obstructed, and it's a federal issue, I've been obstructed by a deputy, no name. And so I already have federal agencies coming in. I have tried to work things out with the city before they come in. There's already issues. I was assaulted by the police and taken out of my own house, and they never show up in court because I'm the owner of my house. So I am asking for a meeting with someone in the city who will speak to me before I talk to the press, who were on me last evening, and are waiting before the Department of Justice, before the FBI, and before the Attorney General, because there are issues we need to speak about that are very harsh and they're federal, and they involve the police department. And I want to, as I was speaking to the chief the last time he was here, who did not get back to me, to resolve what, as much as we can, before lawsuits. That's all I am asking, and I haven't got a response like they have all expressed to me. And that's what I have to say. I need a response. I've asked Mr. Mayor to. Hope to hear from you.
Deputy Administrator, do you mind handing him one of my business cards? And yes, I will have administration get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hearing me.
Further public comment?
Charles Arthur Soul, 42 Bradley Street, Lewiston, Maine. We're heading into another election. I'm going to keep this short. In previous elections, children were holding printed signs by the school department and advocating a yes vote, and they did not have permission from their parents to even be on the curbstone pressing that issue. It put them in a direct odds with the, the parents if they were voting no. Secondly, I'm voting yes on question one. And to the new mainers, I've been expressing, nothing will make your citizenship more valuable.
A point of order, Mr. Mayor. Is this city business?
Counselor Herrmann, what, go ahead, Counselor Herrmann.
I'm just wondering if this public comment relates to city business.
Still voting yes on question one.
It's a, it's a state referendum question? Is this something that the city council has control over?
If the audience could please be quiet, that would be great. Madam, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, what is your take on this?
I'm checking the rules, Mr. Mayor. I know that we can't have anyone do any campaigning at the podium. I'm looking for the actual language to see if it refers to election matters.
Okay, I can see the issue, so we don't have to waste my time. Unless you're putting more time on the clock for me. But anyways, now, I challenge Ward 3 to vote in person and beat the rest of the wards. Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 4, 5, 6, and 7, 8. And that means that Bates College students can vote with their Colorado licenses as long as they show a piece of mail at the voting place like they have in the past. So I guess that's why I'm voting yes on 1.
Further public comment?
Hi, I'm Brett Martell from Ward 7. I wasn't able to make it to the public listening event the other day, so my comment will be on the hiring of the new police chief. Our cops and our police are asked to wear many hats, but the priority must be law and order in the pursuit of public safety. It's not fair to ask the same people we ask to run toward gunfire to be expected to serve as therapists or to coddle everybody through every emotional distressful situation. We need someone who is experienced and rooted in the enforcement of the law. It would absolutely be a bonus to have someone that can wear multiple hats, but the primary focus needs to be on preventing crime proactively or arresting those who commit crimes once they've been committed. If my house is being broken into, I want a chief that will have staffed a group of prepared and effective officers that can meet force with force and have the mentality it takes to run towards violence and risk. If I need a therapist or a counselor after the fact, Lewiston has plenty of resources available for me to get that treatment after the immediately, the immediate physical risk to myself, family, and home has been neutralized. We need a tough-on-crime approach from our next chief. Everything else from this city flows outward from the core of public safety. No one is going to frequent businesses, engage in community events, or enjoy our local artwork or culture if they aren't confident they can do those things without fear of harm to themselves or their families. We cannot prioritize everything, so we must prioritize public safety in our search for a new chief. Thank you.
Further public comment? Public com-
Andrew Jones, Ward 2. I didn't come prepared to speak tonight, so I'm just kind of speaking off the cuff. During a previous council meeting, you folks discussed the serine service provider ordinance. I understand you're talking about it later tonight. Don't get too worked up, Carl. I'm not going to talk about it. I am talking about some of the actions that took place during that particular session. It's my understanding, I've heard through the grapevine, that four of the counselors up there had had discussions amongst themselves prior to any voting that took place. Please don't make the same mistakes that the last council was accused of making. You guys know better than that. Keep the discussions here in this chamber where we can hear and refute those arguments. That's all I have. Thank you.
Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Administrator Administrator, I believe we have a report from you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank everyone for coming out last night to our second community conversation and listening session at our Chief of Police search. It was a Gather to Grow last night. We had a really great turnout. I want to thank everyone for their thoughtful comments and feedback. I learned a lot from the crowd. We had a pretty diverse crowd there last night, so I appreciate that. Just an update on the process. We're currently beginning our first round interviews with candidates, and we anticipate doing a second round with finalists candidates after that. I'd like to recognize some staff milestones. We have some new employees, I'd like to welcome to our team. First, Moise Garcia Cruz, a highway worker. Diane Rochon in building maintenance. Deborah Bossy, parking enforcement officer. And Timothy Costinbader, also a highway worker. We also have several promotions I want to recognize. David Allen has been promoted to a detective at LPD. Ashley Kelly has been promoted to a senior assessor in our assessing department. Troy Kaye, a lieutenant at Lewiston Fire Department. And congratulations to everyone on their new positions here and promotions. We wish you much success here with the city. My next public open office hours, City Ministers' Open Office Hours, will be on October 28th from 4:30 to 6:00. We're working on finalizing a location. We'll have that out to the community shortly. Just a quick note and wrap-up on the busking festival. As you know, we've been really looking at ways to bring new energy and new events to downtown, to Lisbon Street for the community. So this past Saturday, we had our first ever Lewiston Live Busking Festival. It went off pretty well. Turnout was good, could always be better, but it was the first time through. We had a number of great acts with some great attendance around them, and we plan to bring this back again next year. And just remember the lead time on this was about three or four months from idea to actually getting it off the ground. So it was a very short timeframe. So next year, with some longer runway and some more time, we'll have, I think, an even larger and more robust event next year. So I just want to thank everyone involved with that, many city departments and community department partners, public works, our police department, everyone in administration, Joe Rockmal, for making this possible, as well as community partners. We'll be back next year with another event. Thank you to everyone for that. And lastly, just a reminder, this is more Kathy's Wheelhouse, but Election Day is coming up, November 4th. Please get out and vote this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Administrator Kane Rath, we appreciate your service to our city and all of our staff's service to our city. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a consent agenda.
We do. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor. Item number one, continuation of the hearing regarding the property at 54 Knox Street to ratify actions by the Code Enforcement Department and Fire Department to determine if the building was unsafe for occupancy to the October 21st City Council meeting. Item number two, continuation of the condemnation hearing for the building located at 54 Knox Street to the next City Council meeting. And item number three, appointment to the Lewiston Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
May I have a motion, please?
I move all three items.
Second?
Counselor, Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Herrmann. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Motion passed, my vote is 7 to 0.
Thank you very much. Item number 4.
Item number 4, public hearing on an application for a business license renewal for Merrimack River Medical Services Incorporated for an outpatient addiction treatment clinic at 18 Molleson Way. Requested action. There are two items for requested action. The first item is to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and comment regarding the applications submitted by Merrimack River Medical Services Incorporated for renewal of their business license to operate an outpatient addiction treatment clinic at 18 Molleson Way, Lewiston.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Followed by Counselor Nagin. Discussion. Counselor Herrmann.
Thank you. I was just wondering, I know one of the conditions in this is that they not serve more than 500 people, and I just wonder if they've ever expressed any concern about that limit and if they're able to meet the and if they're able to meet the need. I don't know how many clients they currently have or how many might need to use the center. But I'm just wondering if they've ever expressed any concern about that.
They have not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment for this agenda item.
Eric Eddy. I'm not a resident. I am of Auburn, but I own 238 to 280 Main Street, which is approximately just about across from where the Needle Exchange was. So Ryan Gagnon, a local officer that developed a great relationship with.
Excuse me, we're talking about the, I believe it's the methadone clinic, Madam Clerk.
Oh, okay. Sorry. This isn't the syringe.
Almost.
No, 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 no. We're good here. Further public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
So the motion before you then would be to approve the license for an outpatient addiction treatment clinic for Merrimack River Medical Services Incorporated to operate a clinic at 18 Molleson Way, Lewiston, subject to the attached conditions.
Yes.
So the first one?
Yeah, I see my mistake here.
Okay, that's okay.
May I have a motion for the second item?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam, once again, followed by Counselor Herrmann.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under the impression that item number five might take some time, if it pleases the council, I would like to proceed with items six through nine B, so that way we can get people on with their evening.
Great.
Okay, item number six, Madam Clerk.
Item number six, public hearing and approval of amendments to the general assistance policy for annual authorization of eligibility amounts. Requested action, that the maximum amounts allowed for general assistance and the maximums allowed for food, housing, personal care, household supplies, utilities, heating, fuel, clothing, burial, cremation, transportation, and recovery residence expenses in the general assistance policy for persons eligible to receive assistance in accordance with the standards of eligibility be adopted as presented in accordance with HUD guidelines and the current Thrifty Food Plan.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Gallant.
Second.
Second by Counselor Chittam. Director, please kick us off.
Hi, my name is Elaine Brackett. I'm the Social Services Director. I am here to present the general assistance maximums. The maximums for utilities, heating, fuel, personal care, and burial have not changed. The overall maximums have increased by 12.25%. Food maximums have increased by 2%. House and maximums have increased by 12%. The mileage rate has increased by 8%. Recovery residence has increased by 13%. There is also a new monthly maximum for recovery residents with 26 beds or more. Based on a new bill that was recently enacted by the House and Senate, LD 215, calculations are set at 70% of the rate for recovery residents with less than 26 beds. Overall, in-house and maximums are calculated according to HUD Fair Market Rental Rates and changes in the federal poverty level. These increases are effective from 10/1/2025 to 9/30/2026. I'm hoping for questions.
Thank you very much. Yes, discussion from the council. Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Director Brackett. I've looked at the maximum amounts for households, and I noticed that the first four residence categories increased by 12 to 13%. But when you have five or six, the increase is only 4%. Can you explain why there's a distinction or difference?
Well, what happens is that it's the State of Maine and the Maine Welfare Directors Association that look at the, I'm trying to think whatever, that look at what the poverty level is and the income, yeah. I can get that answered for you.
I would appreciate it, because it looked strange to me that across the board for number one through four people in the household had significantly higher increases than the general population, 15% or so in the maximum levels. But then all of a sudden, it drops off to 4% if you have five or six people in the household. That discrepancy just struck me as being strange. So if you could get some answers to me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
No.
Further questions from the council? Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Abstain.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Brackett. Item number seven.
Item number seven. Item number seven, authorizing the disposition of property at 40 Robinson Gardens. Requested action to authorize the City Administrator to dispose of the property at 40 Robinson Gardens in accordance with the city's property disposition policies.
May I have a motion, please?
You may.
Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Nagy. Discussion. Public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number eight.
Item number eight, authorization, I'm sorry, authorizing the disposition of property at 834 Main Street. Requested action to authorize the City Administrator to dispose of the property at 834 Main Street in accordance with the city's property disposition policies.
So moved.
Have a motion. Counselor Gallant, second by Counselor Chittam. Discussion. Public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And we now have item nine B. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Actually, item nine, I think, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, did we? Okay, sorry. Item number nine.
Item number nine, order authorizing and approving the acceptance of the proposed location for the new 911 Communication Dispatch Center as recommended by the 911 Committee. Requested action to approve the order authorizing and approving the acceptance of the proposed location for the new 911 Communication Dispatch Center as recommended by the 911 Committee.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Chittam, second by Counselor Gallant. If you could introduce yourself, good sir, and please kick us off.
My name is Tim Hallm, the Director of the Lewiston Auburn 911 Center. You have the recommendation letter from the 911 Committee in your packet tonight, kind of a very brief, high-level overview. Back in 2021, the City of Auburn formed an ad hoc public safety committee to study the replacement of their public safeties, or their fire station, really. And we happen to be located in the basement of it. Initially, we were considered to be placed into that new building. However, construction costs alone were estimated at about $4 million at the time. So we started searching for some alternatives that might be less costly. Most recently, we were studying relocating to 85 Park Street here in Lewiston. And earlier this year, Auburn City Hall and Auburn came up as a potential option, so we have explored both. At this point, the committee recommends that we pursue the Auburn City Hall location. The cost is considerably lower as it stands. And the reality is, once we get further into the design phase of this project, the contractor that we're working with believes the cost for Auburn City Hall, which is currently estimated in the $2.6 million range, will likely come down. Whereas the cost for 85 Park Street, which is at the $3.5 million range currently, will only increase as time goes on. And it has to do with category four building compliance and the sorts of things that we're required to have. We have a signed letter from an engineer saying Auburn City Hall meets the requirement. We don't know about Park Street, but one of the requirements is that it can withstand any taller buildings nearby from falling on it. And that's not likely, so it would be pretty costly. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
I just want to kick things off and let the counselors know I had a conversation with my counterpart across the river, Mayor Jeff Harmon. They workshopped this last night at the Auburn City Council, so they did not vote on it. But it's my understanding from him that the counselors all seemed in favor of this and will likely be voting in favor of this when it comes on their agenda. Questions from the council? Counselor Chittam.
More comment than anything else. My understanding, Director Hall, is that we need to be out of the central fire station in June of 2027? Ask 2026.
Yeah, that is the latest update that I've had, although I understand there might be some delays with the overall public safety building project, which may allow us a little more time. But as of right now, it's June of next year.
Well, not that I would wish any delays on any construction project in the Twin Cities. I'm hoping that there is a delay, because between now and June is not very much time to prepare either 85 Park Street or Auburn Hall for a 911 center. So we've kicked this can down the road. I serve on the 911 Committee. We've kicked this can down the road for quite a while. And I think I encourage fellow counselors to vote in favor of the committee's recommendation.
Further questions from the council? A public comment for this agenda item.
Matthew Agren, Ward Four. I'm kind of curious at why we maintain a Lewiston Auburn 911 dispatch instead of just joining the county, which we're already paying for? Why do we not use the county dispatch system, which we are paying for to dispatch our 911 calls? It kind of seems ridiculous that we are paying for a service we're not using. It's kind of like when you don't cancel Netflix for a year and a half because you forgot. We're paying for it. Why don't we just use that instead of us joining and, you know, retrofitting another building? They already have the space. They already have the dispatchers. They're the county dispatch. We should use them. Thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Yes, Counselor Nagy.
I would just like to say to Director Hall, the 911 Committee, I appreciate the compromise that was found here. And I'm definitely in support. I'm also thankful for Auburn for hosting the call center, so.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Now, I think we're up to nine B.
Item nine B, order authorizing the use of asset forfeiture funds to purchase 94 Walther PDP pistols to replace the SIG P320 pistols currently used by the police department. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the use of asset forfeiture funds to purchase 94 Walther PDP pistols to replace the SIG P320 pistols currently used by the police department.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Chittam, second by Counselor Gallant. Interim Chief Higgins, thank you for joining us. Please kick us off.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you considering this. We've learned through research and a lot of reports around the country of the firearms that we're carrying now, the SIG Sauer P320, has been accidentally discharging or discharging easily without pulling the trigger. So we're very concerned about this. A lot of departments around the United States are getting away from this firearm. We have a range coming up very soon, and we're going to probably try to, if you guys grant us these monies to allow us an asset forfeiture, we're going to move that range up a week or two, get the new firearms in, so we can qualify with the new guns as opposed to qualifying with these guns and then getting new ones right after that. So if you guys have any expert matter questions, I got Detective Nick Weas here. That's our lead firearm instructor.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Herrmann.
Thank you. I guess my first question is, if these are known to be defective, is the manufacturer taking them back or giving refunds or anything like that?
Well, as of right now, they are not claiming there's anything wrong with them. And they're not refunding on them yet. But there probably will be lawsuits down the road, and there is a chance down the road that we would get a full refund on them if we kept them and didn't trade them in now. If we trade them in now, we're going to get approximately $18,000 to trade them in. They're going to give us $200 a piece to a federal firearm licensee, the same one that we're going to purchase the new firearms from. So then they would buy them all. We would get rid of them to them and get less than we paid, obviously, for them. But, or we could sit on them and maybe get totally reimbursed if this lawsuit goes through, but that could be years away. Or we could take a chance, and they file bankruptcy, and we get nothing back out of them down the road. So we thought probably the best option would get the $200 now, and they'll take a little hit off about $18,000.
Okay, thank you. I guess, so we're selling them to a vendor. If they're currently defective, are they selling them to somebody else? Is that passing the problem on to somebody else?
Well, we're selling the firearms to a federal firearm license dealer. I don't know what they'll do with them from there. You know, that would be up to them.
Okay. And then, I guess my next question is, so I was on the previous council when we approved the purchase that you currently have, which is a little under three years ago.
Yes.
And I didn't, you know, I don't know a whole lot about guns, so I trusted the, you know, the experts to select one that was appropriate. Have you done, what research have you done for this current model? And what other models have you considered? And is this, are we going to be in the same place, I guess, in two and a half years from now where we've got a bunch of defective firearms that were? When I looked into it, these cases were going back almost 10 years that these are known to be defective. So I'm just wondering why that wasn't caught when we purchased these just two or three years ago.
Can I refer to Detective Weas? He knows a lot more about them than I do.
Okay.
So a lot of the problems with these guns have started coming out recently. You're 100% right. It has been going on for a while, but it wasn't really getting a lot of traction. Sixhauer's a very big company, deep pockets, a lot of lawyers, and they've been pushing back against this for quite some time. That's why there's currently no fix, no buyback program or anything like that. Seems that they've just dug their heels in, and, you know, they're going to go for the long haul with this, because they know it's going to probably end up with major lawsuits, a class action lawsuit, possibly bankruptcy. Who knows where this is going to go? With the current firearms, we have done our research on them. We have looked at a couple of different options. But because of the danger that this, you know, brings to us in the community, we want to get new guns as soon as possible. Walther was able to provide us with the quickest turnaround time. Initially, we were looking at the Glocks, because they were a little bit cheaper. But right now, they're 150 days out and counting. Walther, right now, is saying that they can hopefully have them within four to five weeks.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. What's the shelf life of a sidearm?
It all depends upon how much you're shooting it. I mean, if you shoot a lot, it's basically round count.
Well, in Lewiston, what's the expected shelf life?
Generally, we're running seven to eight years.
Okay, so we're halfway through the life cycle of the SIG Sauer.
That's correct.
All right. One of the concerns I have is, we're selling these for assistant, I'm sorry, the interim chief said 200. The packet says 225, not to quibble. That's about $18,000 in revenue from the sale of these used firearms to a federal firearms dealer. Had you considered holding on to those, simply purchasing the, who is it?
Purchasing? You're asking what the new firearm would be.
The new firearm.
The Walther.
Okay, like the PPK Walther, right?
Right.
Okay. I watch James Wan's, too. Had you considered purchasing the Walther firearms and holding on to these SIG Sauer's so that in the event of a settlement, we could perhaps reclaim more than the $18,000 we helped to recoup from the sale today?
Yeah, absolutely. Ultimately, that would be up to you folks to decide, but it's definitely an option. If there's a class action lawsuit that comes forward or they decide that there is a problem and they're going to fix the problem, we could have them fixed for free. And then we could sell them at that point for a lot more money. The only problem with that, and again, this is for you guys to decide, is do we want to take that gamble? Because they may never come out with a fix. This may continue on for another five, 10 years. Who knows? They may go bankrupt. So we want, run that risk if we keep them.
Okay, so it's a game of odds. $18,000 now safe in the bank for sure.
Correct.
Or what would be the return if we hang on to them and they are repaired and able to be sold as used firearms?
Well, if there's a class action lawsuit, we'll probably get back what we paid, which was around 750. If we are able to, or if they're able to fix them and then we sell them, it's going to all depend upon, you know, what the price of that particular gun is at the time. I would venture to say probably in the $400 to $500 range.
Okay, so we could see double or triple a return, but a risk, at a risk, by hanging on to them.
I would say double. I would not say triple. But four, I'd say the $400 to $500.
Okay. Do you have adequate space to store 94 firearms so that they're safely out of harm's way and nobody has access to them?
We would probably have to purchase a safe, but that would be around $1,000 to $1,500 purchase, but we have the physical room, yes.
Okay, all right. So that's a calculus, you say, for the council to determine. I'm not sure, Madam Clerk, how we would separate that out from the motion, which is to purchase the PPK, or the Walther?
Right.
And sell the SIG Howers?
You would need to amend it because it's the last whereas clause that references the $225 per weapon to be sold. So you would have to either delete that clause or amend that clause and then add more money because the $88,000 is taking into account the trade-in value. Yes.
That's a net cost. Okay, so that factors into the equation as well. All right. I'm going to hope that other counselors will comment, give me some idea on whether to make an amendment or not. Thank you.
Counselor Longchamp?
Yes, I think that since you know for sure you're going to get something back for them, I mean, they've been used, they're not safe, I don't think it's smart to hold them, nor do I think it's smart to buy a safe to hold them. I think get rid of them while you can, and hopefully they'll dispose of them properly and not use them again. It is a safety concern. I'm in favor of voting yes for this. Thank you.
Counselor Clant?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of the process. I am a little concerned and would like to maybe have our attorney weigh in. Do we have any liability selling something that's known to be defective to anyone at a later date? It probably is a no, but it might be if I own a pistol or a weapon and I sell it to someone and I know it's bad and they, you know, what our liability could be.
So just to answer your question on that, I called the city attorney this afternoon with that question, and he did not feel that we would have any liability. If we sell it to a private person and something happens, I think we might have some liability. Selling it to a federal firearm licensee, I don't believe we'll, he did not believe we would have the liability either if we sell it to a federal firearm licensee.
All right, good. And with that being said, and I would support getting the $18,000 now and not waiting for something to happen because later on, who knows how long it's going to be? Or maybe the only thing we can find is a private person to buy it or invest, or later on, we don't be that kind of responsibility. So I would support it as written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Najin?
I just want to check on one quick thing. I remember when the Sixhauer conversation came up, there was conversation around armorers, people who were LPD employees that could basically, I guess, do work on the guns. The question is, is that training difficult for Walther? Or do we have people in place that would be able to do so?
Yeah, great question. So we've already worked that out. When we purchased these firearms, Walther's going to train our armorers for free, and we're going to have, we have Sixhauer armorers now, which I believe he is one, but Walther is going to do all our training for free for our armorers for this round, so that'll cover that at no cost.
So that's a value add right there as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Sol?
I fully support this item and in the way that it's written. I think that they should be sold now and not take the chance of them just sitting there for a very long time.
Thank you.
Counselor Roy?
Thank you. I'm not a very good gambler, so I don't want to wait on those. I think we really should pull the trigger, I guess. I don't know.
Or don't.
The audience could please be quiet. I would appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, you were saying something?
No.
Okay. Okay, we are now going to public comment for this agenda item.
I just wanted to know how many?
If you could please introduce yourself and state where you live.
Child Soul, you know, 42 Bradley Street, Lewiston, Maine. I just want to know how many pre, how many pre-discharges the department has had? Have they come into any problems with the, what is it, the SIG P320? If there's been any premature discharges by the department of any of these weapons?
If we can, we're going to take public comment, and when it's done, we will hear from our firearms experts.
Matthew Agren, Ward 4. As written, this is probably the best we're going to get because when this gets settled by SIG, they are no longer going to be a functional company. The class action lawsuits are going to be big. We aren't going to be sitting on getting our money back. We'll be lucky if we get $200 back when they're bankrupt. We ought to go for the 200 now over a possibility of a full refund. Unfortunately, this has got into the stage that there are ranges right now in this country that you cannot carry one of these on.
That's correct.
Because they're considered unsafe. If we stockpile them, it'll become a permanent, well, we can melt them down as a boat weight for the next police boat we buy, but they're not going to be sold back to SIG for any money. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Andrew Jones, Ward 2. I remember when the P320 came out back in 2017 and the issue of the drop fire, is what they called it, was brought up. SIG came out with a voluntary upgrade program where you could send your firearm to them and they would adjust it and send it back to you. I never personally owned one of these firearms, but a friend of mine has one, and he sent his in for the upgrade. He's never had an issue with his firearm. So I'm just curious, is this something that we have considered? Because it's free, you know, we don't have to buy new pistols. I don't know anything about the Walthers, but if they've looked into it and said it's a good pistol, then I'll take their word for it. But free is better than spending money on it, I'd say. So I would recommend tabling this until that can be looked into and make a decision. That's all.
Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Chief Higgins, I invite you to, along with, I'm sorry, is it Detective Weir's?
Yeah, Detective Weir's.
Okay, thank you. I guess, do we want to answer the discharge question and then what Mr. Jones just brought up?
I can answer the discharge question and not, we have zero accidental discharge at the Lewiston Police Department, and we're looking to keep that record. So that's why we're looking to change them out. You know, on the other item, do you know about that?
Yeah, as far as the trigger upgrade, that is correct.
You're just talking to the mic for our audience at home. Thank you.
As far as the trigger upgrade, that is correct. We purchased our firearms after they came out with that trigger upgrade, so we currently have the firearms with that upgraded trigger. The problem with the upgraded trigger is basically all they did was increase the trigger pull weight on it. They didn't fix the problem.
Thank you. Further questions from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you both. And thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We are now back to item number five.
Item number five, public hearing in first passage to amend the business license ordinance for the licensing of syringe service programs. Requested action that the proposed amendments to Chapter 22 Business Licenses, Article 18 Syringe Service Programs of the City's Code of Ordinances receive first passage by a roll call vote, and that the public hearing for said ordinance be continued to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chinam? Second. Second by Counselor Najin. Thank you both. Director Connor, thank you for joining us again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Yeah, no, I appreciate this here. Why don't you kick us off?
Absolutely. I'm going to read exactly what you just showed the council. So at the last council meeting on September 16th, the council debated this ordinance at length with extensive public comments. Following that debate, the council voted to remove the one-to-one language from the ordinance through an amendment. This change eliminated the requirement for a one-to-one syringe exchange, allowing for a more flexible program model. There are some remaining items for discussion. The current draft of this ordinance still needs to be finalized. We anticipate further discussion and potential amendments on at least two key issues and possibly more. But the two, the key issues that we know of are the number of licenses. The current ordinance permits two licenses for SSPs within the city. The council may wish to discuss whether this number is appropriate to meet the community's needs while managing potential impacts. The other item that was a topic of discussion at the last council meeting was the zoning requirements. The ordinance specifies zoning districts where SSPs would be permitted and prohibited. It's crucial to ensure these requirements align with the city's comprehensive plan and minimize adverse effects on residential areas and other sensitive locations. Staff is happy to answer any questions and look forward to working with the council to pass an effective ordinance for the city. Thank you for your consideration. And if I may, I just want to say thank you to the city clerk's office. They have been wonderful in helping rewrite this that I started, so thank you very much.
Excellent. Does the council have thoughts as to whether we talk about licenses or zoning requirements first? Counselor Najin, yes?
We should definitely talk about the number of licenses in the community first, in my opinion.
I'm fine with that, if the rest of you are. We shall discuss exactly that. Who wants to go first? Counselor Najin, back to you.
So during our last meeting, before we've approved an actual draft here, the vote for many for one was predicated on the concept that we would have one licensed operator in the city. I didn't get a chance to voice that because of the way that the meeting went. There are many reasons for this, but ultimately, what we're looking at with the two license piece is we had one SSP that failed, basically, and the community fell apart, and we have one SSP that is actually not?
One second, Counselor. Counselor Longchamp, can you move your mic this way a little bit? I think we're getting a little bit of feedback. Okay.
And we have one SSP that's actually not even an SSP. They're a behavioral health specialist that offers SSP services as just one piece of the portfolio that they're offering. I think that in this community, after the situation that we've dealt with, we need to get to a place where we have trust in the service provider, we have a relationship with a service provider, and that service provider is able to provide the things that we hope a second entity could possibly offer coming into the community. Right now, keeping in mind, we have only one SSP and have had that one SSP since April. So when you think about clinical outpatient services, there's a level of, I think, dignity and respect to that service and a continuum of care that differs greatly from simply exchanging syringes. We don't know, again, who the second operator would be in our community, if there's even one that will come and fill it to begin with at this moment because a lot of that funding is gone. Behavioral health counseling, incredibly important. We're hoping the SSP operators will offer behavioral health counseling. The current provider can do inpatient referrals. They're also connected statewide to several other behavioral health organizations. Partnership and data collection, if we're looking at working with, and again, this isn't a business in my mind, this is a public health response that is dictated by, well, is paid for by the state for us to deal with the opioid crisis for a specific subset of people with the opioid crisis in our community. Screening for infectious disease. If we can't guarantee that we can give quick and on-demand screening for infectious disease, are we really on top of HIV spread? Are we really on top of the spread of Hep C? And again, hoping an organization that comes in here to offer these things doesn't mean that we're going to get that. Referrals for rehabilitative services and detox services. Right now, Spurwink boasts a one-day turnaround, sometimes two hours. The referral services that we're seeing from some of the smaller SSPs that aren't based in behavioral health, we're referring to third-party operators that, when that window closes, if it takes two, three, five days, sometimes those folks just don't go to those services. I think an intimate understanding of the community served is incredibly important. Looking at Spurwink with our operations, with the options workers and Project Support U, we know that they care about their clients and they care about the community that they're serving. And I'm not saying that other SSPs don't. I am saying that one spectacularly let their clients down and the remainder of the community. And it's hard when we see the victimization that happened to the people who use drugs in our community and the wider community to say, do we want to be in the same situation with an unknown entity coming into our community? I would also say that, you know, outreach services, they're super, super important, and this is one of the bases that Spurwink offers. So what I'm saying is we should be looking at our SSP operator as a community partner and a partner in this specific work, not as a business that we, that anybody can come hang a shingle up in our community, especially right now, especially after the, I think, the CDC is going through several pieces as far as their regulatory framework to make sure that they don't drop the ball in licensing and also in enforcement. I'm not 100% comfortable that they're there at this moment. Also, I'm not 100% comfortable that an organization that comes into our community has the relationships that are here with the service provider that we're working with now. And so that would be my argument for either holding the license at one or putting in a, at least a six-month moratorium on the second license with the possibility to review it after 30 days. I would also say that Auburn currently has a moratorium, and so, you know, there's, Sanford's talking about closing their SSP services. Like, there's reasons to say, go with the trusted partner and support that trusted partner versus saying, until there's a demonstrable need for a second SSP service, saying, we need one today. And so, you know, that's my position, and I'm hoping that we can have a further discussion about this.
Counselor Roy?
Thank you. Well said, Counselor Najin. My problem, my only problem with that is, is when you limit it to one, if funding gets cut, if any parts of the program get cut, the employees are not there, you're not servicing the people. That's my only problem with that, when you limit it to one. Okay? I have a problem with that. Myself, I would like to see, you know, maybe two or three. Two, I would be okay with, but I think, you know, we have a great provider in this community. They do outstanding work, you know, and I trust what they do. But there are other entities out there that do the same kind of work, too, and I would hate to limit it to one. I think we're doing a disservice because if funding gets cut for any reason, then what happens is, is we're not servicing the clients or the people, and then that puts out, you know, more communicative diseases. All right? We can't, we can't, we can't do that. I just, I would hope that, you know, we look at that and think, maybe we should put two. I would be okay with two because funding is never, ever guaranteed in this line of work. So that's my comment on that.
Counselor Clant?
Thank you, Mayor. Both counselors, thank you, well said. And nobody throw stones from the audience. You know, I don't know why we have to have a limit. You know, we talk about funding. If, for some reason, in the next six months, the government comes out and says, we're going to fund hospitals for these kind of program, we have we have two perfectly good hospitals in town that each could have their own program, along with our current SSP. We get to make a decision up here on whether or not they get to go forward. I don't know why it has to say in here how many we can or cannot have. Because we don't know what the circumstances are going to bring. One might be enough, two might be enough, four might be better. We get to regulate them through our own policy procedure here. So I hate to see us, you know, limiting ourselves for an opportunity or somebody not coming into our community who can help these people because we say we only have two or we only have one. And going to a bike says, you know, quite frankly, we don't know where the money's going to come and go, how the program's going to be. We don't know that at some point in time, methadone clinics might not become SSPs. Because that's a good contact source, you know? And they're trying to broaden this now at the federal level to where there's more facilities and more things available to people who have addiction problems. Okay? They would like to make it a better program, and how long that's going to be, we don't know. But the reality is, I'm not in favor of limiting it simply because we need to have a number. We get to make the decision whether they get or don't get a license. Just like anything else in the city. We don't limit how many bars we have. We certainly don't limit how many marijuana places we have, you know? I mean, you get right around to it, right? So why are we going to limit one particular industry? We're going to say next, we only can have one hospital? I don't fly with me well. So that's where I stand with that.
Counselor Herman.
Thank you. So I have similar concerns to Counselor Roy. I do understand Counselor Nagin's position, and I totally understand the, you know, the loss of trust that people have based on the actions of the SSP that has closed. But my concern is, if anything, we're basically, we'd be putting all our eggs in one basket. You know, we had two SSPs before. One of them closed, and the other one has had to absorb much of that, much of their clientele without increased funding as well. We do, the other difference here is that, you know, as of right now, we don't have an ordinance where we can decide who opens an SSP and who doesn't. That's all regulated by the CDC. Once this passes, we will have that ability, and we require a lot of things in the application and quite a lot of subjective things as well, that if they don't meet the expectations that we set, then we don't have to give them a license. So I totally understand the concerns, and I, if the one SSP we have could do it all, I would be okay with that. But I'm just concerned that it's just running a risk that we end up in another situation like we have been with one closing because of various issues, including funding issues. If that were to happen to the other one, we'd be in a pickle.
Counselor Soul.
Well, first, I want to make sure that we're not turning this into a Spurwink ordinance. As much as I trust them, we need to, we need to make sure that we're keeping this as an SSP ordinance. I support one license for the simple fact that I just don't trust the program. I don't even trust the CDC. I don't ever want to see what happened to the city happen ever again. And I think we need to protect our residents and our business owners by keeping it at one license. They have been increasing their numbers. We have opioid funds. Can opioid funds be used, I'm assuming, to help assist whenever they're out of resources? Anybody?
Yes, we could do that during the budget season. We've given out $80,000 for the last three years. So if that's something you folks want to do when we come budget season, you know, beginning of the year, we can say, you know, what we have for funds, what you want to use. My concern is if one of these organizations depends on this year after year, we don't know what we're going to get for money. Sometimes we get a lot. Sometimes we don't get that much because it's a, you know, a class action lawsuit. And sometimes the money just comes in, you know, 30 grand here, 40 grand there.
Okay. Well, I would be in support of helping them if they needed help with resources. I really do trust Spurwink, and I think they're doing a fantastic job. They have a lot of other options at their place of business, not just the needle exchange. That helps with the whole, the bigger picture of the entire process of a drug addiction. There's counseling. There's all kinds of resources for them at Spurwink. So I really encourage the other councilors to consider that. So, thanks.
I just want to quickly chime in here. You know, I'm with Counselor Roy. You know, we don't need 50, but I think one's a little low. Yeah, three sounds great. I would be fine with two. And I understand, Counselor Nagin, and agree wholeheartedly, we can't have what happened before with COCE happen again. And this is exactly why we have this ordinance, where we're putting in guardrails, good neighbor policy. And, you know, this ordinance is designed to, you know, hold institutions accountable and then provide a framework from within where they can operate. I think this is exactly why we're having this discussion. Yeah, I think one is just not enough, and I cannot support a moratorium. Further, Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In general, I feel that one will not serve a population of 39,000 people. However, because we have one that's been operating effectively since April, and Counselor Nagin has proposed 180-day moratorium, I would not oppose that. I would look very strongly to see that moratorium lifted automatically. But it gives us time to see how the ordinance is working. We have no experience with that today. And it does provide for the continuation of Spurwink services, provided Spurwink chooses to apply for a license. I agree with Counselor Soul. We do not want to see another COCE situation here in Lewiston. I'll remind us all that the reason this ordinance is here in the first place is because COCE abused its position in the city. It misled us and treated the city of Lewiston very badly. So I would be in favor of a six-month moratorium, provided this passes and provided that Spurwink applies for the license, to give us the time to see how it's working, to kick the wheels and make certain that the ordinance is doing what we want it to do, provided there is an automatic sunset provision in that moratorium. No, I'm sorry. The question from Counselor Soul was a moratorium for a limit of two. I think Counselor Nagin proposed that we limit it to one for 180 days and see how that operates. And if we discover that we've got two additional candidates who have the qualifications of Spurwink at the end, then we may want to consider having a limit of three. I'm not altogether certain that a limit is necessary, but I think it's politically desirable with this council. So I'm supporting the thought of 180-day moratorium.
Thank you, Counselor Chittam. And I encourage councilors to ask questions when they're recognized. Counselor Longchamps.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Director O'Connor. I would support one syringe service. I would have supported two had we done a one-for-one exchange. But that was off the table at our last council meeting. As I said before, I wish this problem didn't exist at all. Do I think it's a cure-all for people not sharing their needles? No, I don't. But I think we have to try to find a balance. I would like to see one license. Again, I would have agreed to two licenses with an exchange of one-to-one with a certain cap for the weekends. Thank you.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'd like to backtrack. This all started because of needle waste, period. Okay? It didn't start because of any other reason. So let's keep it in preference to why we're here today and what we're trying to fix. You know, I could probably be okay with two. I wish now I would have gotten a question, and perhaps a director might know this answer. Does Spurwink operate other SSPs out of this area? Or did they inherit it when they purchased the facility it was there? Do you know that by chance?
I don't know that answer, Counselor.
Can, do, yeah, we'll just get this question answered. If you can join us at the podium, just so for our audience at home.
Good evening. Catherine Ryder, Senior Director of Strategic Initiatives at Spurwink, formerly CEO at Tri-County Mental Health Services when we opened the SSP, the first SSP in this community. And yes, indeed, it did transition when we joined with Spurwink on April 1 of 2024.
Do you know if they operate other SSPs in the state?
There is a program that functions out of the Crisis Receiving Center in Portland, but it's a little bit different than what we do here.
Okay, thank you. So my reasoning and this questioning is, there's nothing to say, God forbid, that they don't go out of business or someone buys them and it doesn't transfer, and then we have none. So that's why my logic is, I would like not to have any, but I would go with two simply as a backup, because then you have coverage. If we end up with two facilities and one goes away, at least we have one in the community. If they go away altogether, everything goes away. All services go away. And I have a concern for that. So I would support two, though I don't think we should have to have a number simply because we ought to be able to protect ourselves with the industry, things change. I hope they're going to be a fixture, as the previous one was, for 100 years. But there's no guarantee on any of that stuff today. So that's where my concern comes with only having one. Thank you.
Counselor Herman.
Thank you. So the practical effect, I guess, if we were to, if we were to put a moratorium of 180 days on that second license, we at least wouldn't be going backwards from where we currently are, because we currently have one SSP. Everyone on the council seems to have a lot of trust in them, and their location is currently zoned within this draft ordinance's parameters. My concern with that is whether, one, they're able to meet the need with the amount of funding they have, and that might require us to chip in some more from the city. And then, two, I think that the current location is not necessarily serving all of the need in the community. So I would, if we were to do this, I would like to see that, I believe we currently limit the licenses to, the licenses tied to the location. So if we were to say, you know, Spurwink is the only game in town for now, I would want to see it that they are able to open another location and/or allow for mobile SSPs as well. Because I, while they're doing great work at their current location, it's, there are a lot of people in my neighborhood who I'm pretty sure they don't get out there. And it's going to be even harder in the winter. So I think we need to, if we're going to stick with just Spurwink, we need to expand their area that they're allowed to operate in.
Counselor Nagin.
So just real quickly, I'm hoping 100 years from now, we won't actually need SSP services because we will have solved the issue of opioid crisis in our community. Just, you know, as a piece here, we're talking about these organizations failing, right? Like, this is what we saw with COCE. There was a failure based on its funding model, its volunteerism, all of these other pieces. Opioid recovery funds, that is, the purpose for opioid recovery funds is to address prevention, harm reduction, education, and I'm forgetting the fourth one. But ultimately, the SSP services fall, like, absolutely within harm reduction. We also don't know what's going to happen in January. We don't know who's going to get elected. We don't know what type of funding mechanisms are going to come down from the state. We don't know what the federal government's going to do. We don't know any of these pieces. We do know we have one trusted partner in the community that we can provide support for now. And I know that there was a mention of it within the budget season. But I do believe, if I'm not incorrect, that the opioid recovery funds are completely discretionary at the councils. Is that correct?
There are certain parameters we have to use it for, but, you know, working with an SSP would be one of them. I mean, and then if we wanted to do an allocation out of budget cycle, that was something that we could bring forward.
Okay, thank you. I'd also say as well that I know that everybody's like trying to pick a number here. But if we're working with a partner in the community who says, we can handle the demand, whatever that demand is, I'm comfortable with that. And if we're working with a partner in the community that says, we can't handle this demand, then that makes us need to do something different, right? Like, the other piece that I would bring up is, no location is going to be perfect, no matter where we put an SSP. It does not matter. It's not going to reach, I know where there are people who are, I mean, we have overdoses on Pond Road, right? Like, how are we going to make sure SSP services are in the right places to reach everybody in the community? I think it's more about looking at some of the mobile licensing pieces and the outreach pieces, which some of that legislation has changed as well. So, again, I'm just putting out that my support for the many for one was predicated on the fact that we would be working with one partner for the foreseeable future while we figure out where we're at in this community is. I want the fur to die down, and I want good partnerships. That's what I want. And I know we have a good partner right now that we could support, as opposed to hoping, the flipping, you know, like, batting a 500 average is great for a baseball player, but it's a coin toss right now for SSPs in our community. And I don't want that situation to come up again. And again, if we issue a license to somebody, all they have to do is check the boxes we're putting through. It has absolutely nothing to do with how they're actually tied into our community, how they work in our community, or their trustworthiness over time. So.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you. So I'm going to go back to a couple of things. Counselor Glant said that the reason why we're doing this is because of waste. We're not here to debate who's the good partner and all that stuff. We already know a lot of that. And we're not, I mean, we're not up to the part where we talk about mobile units, because I have a whole slew of notes that I want to bring up. But I think if you can solve the littering problem, like, real, like, paper littering problem, when there's a trash can literally five feet away from you, you can solve this syringe problem, the waste. I think, you know, right now, we have to get back to the root of what this is. It's not about how many SSPs we have in this community, I don't believe. Okay? We have a problem with waste. How do we fix that? Is it by limiting one SSP to the city? I don't believe that. I don't believe that. If you make it more accessible for people to give needles up?
If the audience could please refrain from speaking, that would be great. You can go into the hall if you need to speak. We can hear you whispering under your breath. Please stop. Counselor Roy, please continue. Counselor Roy, please continue.
I just think, like, if there's more disposal places for needles, it may help. We've got trash cans. Literally every 10 feet, people still throw things on the ground. I don't know how to solve this. But I don't think limiting it to one provider in this area is going to solve anything.
Counselor Longchamps.
Yes, all I have to say is, this is not paper litter. This is something where if someone gets stuck because someone irresponsible or too high did not dispose of it properly or break the tip of it, this is not your everyday litter. This is something serious. So you're saying until we address or take care of or conquer paper, we shouldn't be addressing this type of litter? This is a hazard to the city. Well, then what were you saying?
Counselors, please, we're not going to debate or go back and forth. Counselor Longchamps, please, if the audience could please be quiet, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Public comment. We haven't had it yet for this agenda item. You'll have an opportunity to speak later. Counselor Longchamps, please continue.
Yes, it's just, you know, this is not your everyday piece of paper that's being thrown down. This is, this is a hazard in so many- This is, this is a hazard in so many ways. So I just think it's, you know, it's disappointing to even compare that to, like, until we solve the issue with everyday litter, you know, we're not going to be, then we can deal with this. That's what it sounded like to me. And if it's not, I hope you raise your hand and try and, if you would share with me what, maybe I misunderstood you.
Counselor Sol.
I don't believe that more Sharps containers is the answer either. We've already established that the users have been deemed incapable of putting needles in Sharps containers. They had an establishment right on Main Street where they could have brought them to get clean needles, and they chose not to. So I don't see that having anything short of a one-for-one, or even, I mean, with a cap, one for many with a cap, 20, a cap of 20, would make a huge difference compared to 100 needles going out there. I will admit that the needle problem is not as severe as it was, but that's because we don't have that provider sitting on our Main Street. So I just, we need to protect the public. I understand that there is harm reduction for the user, but it's not harm reduction for the public. It is just not. When they're walking around and there's dirty needles on the ground, that's not harm reduction for anyone except for the user. And quite frankly, I find it absurd that we are up here creating city policy around drug users, around individuals participating in illegal activity. We are literally up here making city policy around that. I don't even have the words. So that's, that's my speech.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. So this ordinance is, is to deal with a public health issue that is, that is tied to people who have a diagnosable disease. But getting back to Sharps boxes, I think that we can work on this ordinance, and we can, we can definitely improve our, our response to needle litter at the same time. I know that it seems like Public Works has an awful lot on their plate, and I don't know if we can use our opioid settlement funds to have another partner help out with these things. But, you know, it took many weeks and many tries to get an answer from administration when I just asked for a Sharps box to be put in a place where I find needles every week. There's another box near my house that has disappeared twice now. It's been completely unbolted from the stop sign that it's attached to. I don't know who's responsible for that, but it's, it's concerning that we don't, you know, if we have an issue with litter on the ground, then we should at least try to, to address it through picking it up, providing containers for it to go in. I don't think that that takes away from this process as well. I just think it's something that we need to do concurrently.
Counselors, I would like to remind you that we're talking about the number of sites needed. Counselor Najin, and then we'll go to you, Counselor Glant.
Just again, I can't make it clear enough how sharply divided this community is about needle exchanges right now. And that's primarily because we went through a really traumatic experience that impact, when we say it's, we're talking about needle waste? No, we're talking about businesses that literally were seemingly fighting on their own to stay open while there was activity happening around them that they had no control over. It's about a lot of things, right? And so again, I'm asking for compromise so that we can allow a many-for-one model while, while we're not expanding services, we're supporting the organization that is providing those services because we have faith and trust in them. You know, and again, if we can't get to that, like, I don't know what the solution is. We have to make some compromise here, all of us. So.
Counselor Glant, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Clear as mud, so we'll start with that. So we're looking at a moratorium that's going to say, we're going to keep one facility, SSP, and at the end of 180 days, if we figure out we need more than one, then we're going to up the number. Is that what you're proposing, Counselor Najin?
At the, at the period of 180 days, I would like to have the moratorium reviewed 30 days before it expires, but regardless, we might not be, well, you're not going to be here. I might, well, I'll be here. Some of us will not be here, right? And so I think it really depends on the, on who's sitting at these seats at that, at that given time, and also what the state does, what the state and federal government does, right? Because there is a possibility that funding just completely dries off for SSP services overall. What do we do then? Do we simply just not have SSPs? Do we use some of the opioid recovery money in order to do that? So that's just, my preferred moving forward with a many-to-one model is that we work with just the one provider at this point, and we can make decisions after there's a demonstrated need. I mean, right now, I am not sold, nobody has showed me that we need two, three, five, 20 SSPs in this community.
I understand, I guess, the follow-up is, who's measuring? Number one, us, the provider? What happens at 60 days, they decide they're overwhelmed? We're going to penalize them for 120 days more to bring onboard maybe a second one if we really need it in our community? I'm not against the moratorium. I'm against not having some kind of measuring to see if it's going, if it's, there is a problem, is what you're talking about, and whether or not we can speed it up if we need to, so that that one provider decides, this is just too hard, we're going to go away, and we have zero. So I'm not against what you're proposing. I just would like to see how it's going to lay out so that the provider that we currently have doesn't feel they're trapped in a box for 180 days, number one, or it's so overwhelming that they decide, we're just not going to do this because we're the only ones in our company doing it now, and it might save money by cutting eight, 10 people, and it's not worth the aggravation what Lewiston's going to put us through. That's my concern.
Yes, Counselor Najin.
Just real quickly, I think we could just simply ask the provider as well. They're in the room. You know, I think, I think there might be some value in getting some feedback from them, because maybe what I'm proposing, they can't handle and they don't want to do. Maybe what I'm proposing, they'll absolutely want to do and ask for some supports. You know, so, you know, I mean, that's what I'm talking about, with having a relationship with the provider in a way that is beneficial for a public health response, because that's what we're at right now. This is, this is what we're looking at. And so I don't know if possibly we could ask Spurwink to answer these questions?
Yes, no, thank you, Counselor Najin. Director Ryder, if, if you could, I guess, join us at the podium, just so we could ask you a couple of questions, as we're talking about this very item. And Counselor Najin, please correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're proposing is, you know, kind of this, like, six-month pause on new applicants, and then, yes, correct? Yeah. And then, would you, how do you feel about this, Director Ryder? Like, could, could Spurwink handle this? Are we droning right now, et cetera? Yeah, please.
I would offer that we have been handling it. It's been six months. We've been operating on our own, and we've maintained the volume successfully. We don't have enough funding to continue to do this, and we're hopeful that, as you've mentioned, the opioid settlement funds, that there might be some supplemental funding there to help us carry this forward. And I need to correct my statement earlier when I said that Portland did have an exchange program. They have harm reduction initiatives. There are no syringe exchanges out of the Portland program.
Thank you. Further, yes, Counselor Chidam.
Yeah, I'd like to correct, I think, something that you said, Mr. Mayor, that we would have no applicants over the proposed moratorium. I would submit that we could accept applications. We simply wouldn't issue any licenses. That 180 days would also help us gauge whether or not there's interest in another SSP coming to Lewiston. So I'm, I'm growing more and more in favor of accepting 180-day moratorium on more than one license, with the condition, as I said earlier, that that moratorium automatically sunset, and that we spend that time working with the one SSP that is operating in Lewiston right now to evaluate the efficacy of this ordinance and to see whether or not it can continue, and whether other applicants are showing themselves up.
Just for clarification, Counselor Chidam, you're saying during this time we would accept, accept applications but not process them, or otherwise?
That would be my hope, is that I would not want us to wait 180 days and suddenly learn that we need two SSPs in Lewiston and have no applications pending. This ordinance provides, has provisions for priority of applications, but I don't, I don't, I'm hoping Counselor Najin is, Najin is not saying we will not accept applications beyond the one. We would simply not issue licenses beyond the one for 180 days. If we decide that we need two SSPs, based on the evidence of that six-month trial period, and there is an applicant in the wings, then we're ready to go. We don't have to wait for the entire application process to play out. So I would hope that the moratorium would be on issuing licenses, not accepting applications.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor Najin.
Yeah, it's, so just to move this forward, if, one, I would support the 180-day moratorium with the self-fall-off. I think that's fine, provided that, again, you know, we don't know what's going to happen overall, funding levels, whether or not SSP services are still even offered from a state level, even though I do think that they probably will be, and our actual community need, right? Like, we don't, we don't have any of that information present to say, this is, this is the fact. Second piece would be that, yeah, I'm fine with the idea that we can accept applications for SSPs. I don't think there's, there's going to be a bunch of providers banging on our door at this point anyways. There's just no funding left in this cycle right now. And then I think that SSP providers are currently challenged with their own, with their own population set that they're dealing with in the communities that they're dealing with them, so. But I guess we would have to get a vote on that and if we're going to move forward on it.
Okay, one second, Counselors. Madam Clerk, so moratorium requires, like, a separate process and a notice and everything else. Am I correct in saying that?
It does. So my recollection of moratorium ordinances is that, number one, moratorium ordinances are defined in state statute. Past practice has been that the city attorney has crafted the moratoriums for us. My recollection also is, is that we can make moratoriums retroactive regarding their effective date. So, but yes, so the motion would potentially be to direct city staff, if you want to go that route, to direct city staff to contact the city administrator, to draft a moratorium ordinance, to bring it back to the next council meeting, something along those lines, if that's the direction you want to take.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just trying, yeah, okay, thank you. Counselor Harriman, yes.
Thank you. Similar to what I said before, I was just, I just urge counselors, if we're going to go that route, to, rather than limit it to one license, because the way this is written, the license is tied to the location, I would try to limit it to, I don't know how we would word it, but limit it to the one provider, so that they could continue to operate their current location, but they could also operate another location and/or mobile SSPs as well, just because I, yeah, I'm just concerned about being able to meet the need in the city.
Yes, Counselor Chidam.
Mr. Mayor, there are a lot of moving parts here. Counselor Najin has proposed a specific, although there isn't a motion on the floor for an amendment, the motion on the floor now is to adopt the ordinance as presented by staff. I don't think the council is ready to do that. I would ask Counselor Najin to make a motion pursuant to the city clerk's instruction to have administration craft a moratorium. I don't believe we can vote on that today, but we can vote on instructing the administration to prepare an ordinance for us to consider down the road.
I guess, thank you, Counselor Chidam. Madam Clerk, please correct me, but I guess what I was trying to say before, a moratorium, I was trying to imply before, a moratorium would be just a completely separate process at this point. If this is something that a majority of the council would like to look into, there would, yes, be something drafted by city attorney, and that would be its own agenda item that could be voted up or down by the council. Am I understanding, is my understanding of that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's correct, because moratorium ordinances have different legal notification requirements for the public hearing, as far as I recall, and just different criteria.
Yeah, so I don't believe a vote would be necessary for that, would just be to direct staff to, you know, prepare such an agenda item. Would that be accurate, Madam Clerk?
I think for clarification, staff may want to have a vote by the council to proceed to do that, just so it's clear.
And then, yeah, and if we added something, then we, tonight, we would then need to suspend the rules for that agenda item, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counselor Glant.
This is for the city clerk. Can we have a moratorium on something that's not been passed yet or finished?
Yes, the, the purpose of the moratorium is to buy additional time to allow for the crafting and creation of the rules and regulations. We've probably done, I don't know, five or so moratoriums since I've been here, and that's the exact purpose, Counselor Glant, is that an issue is identified in the community, and we need to pause, we need to put pause on it to allow time for staff, the city attorney, the council to craft and decide the regulations and direction that we want to take. So we did that for marijuana businesses several years ago and others in the past, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, I, I went through the whole moratorium process with the last council over shelter, and the only thing that I want to say is that just sort of, you know, it sends the wrong message, sends a chilling effect. I would, I understand people have their opinions, and we're starting to be dug in on them, and I get that completely. I would much rather spend the time necessary to create the ordinance that, that allows us to have faith in the application process and all the guardrails we put in place for a, for a needle exchange. Counselor Harriman?
Just very quickly, I'd also add for consideration that if we added that step to this, you know, that would, that would add some more delay to this whole process, having to draft that ordinance, vote on it twice, and then it would, it would just increase the amount of time that we're spending on this.
I mean, theoretically, we could work on those things concurrently, but yes. Counselor Chidam.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the moratorium would not be on licensing needle exchanges or SSPs. The moratorium would be on adding additional licenses beyond the one, which I think we all assume the council is prepared to, to issue, provided we get an application.
Counselor Najin, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if we could get maybe an up or down on that so that we can move forward to the other pieces? Who would support a moratorium on additional licensing at this point? I guess, is the question.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So I guess, yes, who among the council would, would support asking staff to, to place on the agenda a formal question, asking them to work on a moratorium? Two out of seven, am I reading that correct? Okay, all right. And now back to the, the question of licenses. Right now, we're at, we're permitting two, so we would need, yeah, that's where we're at right now. But how do counselors wish to proceed at this point? Counselor Longchamp.
In the ordinance, it's for two. Again, I just want to say that I only want one. I would support one. I would only have supported two if there was a cap, if there was a one-to-one exchange.
Counselor Sol.
Yes, I'm the same. I want one license. And, yeah, I would have done two if there was a cap, but there's, I guess we can talk about that after, I don't know. about that after, I don't know.
Counselor Chittam?
Procedurally, we are being asked now to vote on the entire ordinance as drafted. This would be an amendment to accept the two-licence provision of the ordinance, given the, given the, given the preferences of Counselors Longchamp and Soul. That's the way the ordinance is written, and I think in order to answer that question, we should, we should vote on it, but I'm not quite sure how to do that.
If I may, Counselor Chittam, so two is, correct me, Counselor Connor, Director Connor, so it says two right now in the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so if we want a different, so if we're fine with two, we're, we can just move on to discussion about zoning. If somebody wants to offer up an amendment to change it, one way or the other, that's the process for that. Does that sound accurate, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Occasionally, I know what I'm talking about. Counselor, Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. Just as we discuss this, I've heard several times that people would, they're, they're connecting the number of licenses with the number of syringes allowed to be distributed, and I'm just, I, I have never heard of a connection between the two, and I'm just wondering, just for informational purposes, if anyone could explain the connection between the number of licenses and the number of syringes that are provided.
Back to you, Counselor Glant.
Trying to be politically correct in my thought process, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You probably haven't heard, because it's the first time anyone's probably doing it, so that's probably why. I think attaching the number to it is going to give some confidence, it's going to be more control if you have a second facility, so it's about control of the process. So I, I think what their Councilors are proposing is, we could go back and amend the original amendment again and say that we want to reopen that item, and that we would be willing to change that to say, whatever we decide, one-for-one, so many for a weekend, you know, something along that line, and if that got approved, we could roll back into where we are right now and then get our two if we want to have two. That would be the solution to make this move forward, based on there are two, or we could just call for a vote for an amendment, and if it passes, those Councilors are out and we move forward. That's our two choices.
That's it.
Well, at this point, if Counselors want a, a different number of licensees, then, then perhaps they could offer up an amendment. Otherwise, we will be talking in circles here.
Pretty sure I did, and pretty sure it died, so.
Well, then it was, we were talking, if I may, I think we were talking about a, a moratorium, but if you want to propose an amendment for the number of licensees, then we can see if there's a second.
Yeah, if we're not going to be able to accept a moratorium, then I, if, in order to, to reach the many-for-one, then we would have one license. Like, ultimately, we're dealing with a situation right now where, where, again, there has to be compromise. Somebody has to make compromise. Otherwise, we're going to end up with, with an ordinance that, that doesn't meet the need, in my opinion, you know, so. So I would propose one license.
An amendment has been proposed. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second the one license.
Did you catch all that, Madam Clerk?
So, yes, I think it was Counselor Najin, seconded by Counselor Soul.
Correct.
And so just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, that would be, and certainly Director Connors can correct me, but it would be Section 22-492, subsection A1, is where I'm seeing the, the number of licenses. So just to make sure that we're on the same page, it's Section 22-497A1, I believe, is the section that Counselor Najin is looking to amend.
I believe that's correct.
Thank you. Okay, discussion on this ordinance, or, I'm sorry, on, discussion on this amendment. Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. So I appreciate Counselor Glant's explanation, but I'm, I guess the question I was asking was, what is the, so I understand the purpose of limiting the number of licenses in the city, and I understand the reasoning behind limiting the number of syringes that can be distributed, but I don't understand the connection between the two and why you would have, why you can't, why you can't have both, and why, why if you have one, you can't have the other, and if you have the other one, you can't have the first one. I'm, I'm just not understanding the connection between the number of SSPs and then the number of syringes that are able to be distributed, because the number of people who need the services isn't going to change. They're going to be, they're either all going to go to one, or if we have two, they're going to go to two different ones. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand the connection between those two. I understand the, the, the ideas behind restricting both of them. I don't understand the idea behind tying them together and restricting them.
Counselor Glant?
It's their opinion. That's the only thing you need to know. I hate to say it that way. It's what they want, and they're Councilors, and they get to ask for what they want. It doesn't have to have a mathematical reason why two plus two equals four. They just want it, and that's why we're debating it.
I appreciate that explanation, Counselor Glant. Counselor Soul?
It's about trust, Counselor Herrmann. So we do trust the one provider that we have now. We have no idea who's going to come in next, and I'm sure whoever comes in is going to give us all the answers that we want to hear, and we have no idea if it's going to turn into another Main Street dilemma. So that's why, that's where that comes in. So if there's two licenses, we have no idea who the other person or the other provider will be, so we are going to restrict it to one-to-one, because there's no trust that they are going to be using that program responsible, the way that we see Spurwink doing so. That's my opinion, anyway.
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you, Counselor Soul. I, I, I think what you're saying is there's no trust that the Council, there's no trust that the Council will make wise decisions in issuing a license, and that there's no trust that the inspections that would be required under this ordinance would be undertaken. This ordinance provides a great deal more oversight, infinitely more oversight than we had, than we have today over SSPs. The purpose of this ordinance, no matter what its origins are, is to have city oversight over the operations, which is where our prior SSP failed. We, we did not have oversight over that. It took an inadvertently opened door for Code to have access to that building, to go in and see the atrocious conditions under which that SSP was operating. This ordinance, if passed, would eliminate that possibility of having an out-of-control SSP. So when you say there's no trust that an SSP would operate in accordance to guidelines, I think what you're saying is there's no trust that the ordinance and the systems that would be put in place by that ordinance would be effective.
Counselor Longchamp?
Yes, I just want to share one thing. Going to Counselor Chittam's comment about the door that basically was open and then caused Code to go in and shut it down, that's not the first time we heard of what was going on at Cozy. We were sharing that with you all along, what was going on. That's it.
Counselor Longchamp, or, Counselor Najin?
So just really quickly, I think, you know, one of the logics behind the, the one-for-one exchange, if we're going to open up the, the city to an unknown entity, is, again, it's an unknown entity. And the, the challenge here is, instead of accepting the good and trying to make it great, right, we're, we're hoping for fantastic, even though we have nobody who's coming into our community to, to, to offer these services. You know, one of the things that stands out for me, yeah, is if you check the boxes, you're going to get the license. That's a fact. Like, if you check the boxes, you're going to get the license. We cannot discriminate against people that we don't like the look of, right? Like, we're, we're working with a, with an organization right now that, that has relationships with LPD, right? Established relationships with LPD. We see in at least one SSP that I'm aware of, very strong ACAB and anti-capitalist messaging, which, if it was coming from our community, could possibly be acceptable. Our, our citizens are allowed to have those opinions. But having organizations coming from outside of our city that don't trust the establishment of, of our behavioral health functioning and the way that our, our police are required to answer these, these charges, concerns me. The messaging of the organizations sometimes concern me. And, and again, we have a model that works, that works well, that we could support. And so, you know, this is, this is why, you know, we're, we're going to spend a lot of time debating these things, like, instead of just saying, can we just go with, with the trusted thing that we know works? That's all. That, that's what I want to do, is go with the trusted thing that we know works, so.
Further discussion from the Council before we vote on this amendment? Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. I just wanted to double-check that, the way this is written, a license is tied to one location. So it seemed like Counselors have a lot of trust in Spurwink, and I just wonder if they would be open to, to amending this, to allow them to open one, I mean, probably one would be sufficient, one or more other locations, or to add mobile SSPs. Because the way, you know, if we, if we limit this to one license, that's their current building, which is not very close to downtown, and I don't know that it will meet the entire need in the city.
Further comments, questions from the Council? Yeah, okay, I, I think we'll go to public comment for each amendment here.
I will play you.
Yes, please, please, I, a public comment is now open.
All right, Brett Martel, Ward seven. So it bothers me in the first place to watch our Council and our city aid in a bed in criminal behavior. That's exactly what it is. I don't know how much better we are than the drug dealers by producing the paraphernalia for them to inject themselves with dangerous poison. So the other issue here is, it seems nearly ludicrous that we're abandoning the one-for-one model. The only reason we got away from this was during COVID. The standard was one-for-one, the expectation was one-for-one. COVID was a once-in-a-hundred-year epidemic that altered the way the entire country functioned. And for those reasons, for having less person-to-person contact, or whatever it may be, excruciating, extenuating circumstances created an opportunity for these, the one-for-one to be loosened, and I guess you could make the argument for it in that case. We're well past the threat of COVID. So why wouldn't we return to pre-COVID standards and distribution of one-for-one? The other thing is, is with one-for-one, you are going to inherently control the waste. If we could trust, which it seems we can't, these users to not throw them on the ground in front of businesses, to not throw them in parks, for them not to be left around, or to put them in Sharps containers, we wouldn't have a waste issue. So when you give someone 20, 40, 60, 100 needles for one, you give them no built-in incentive to care what happens to them. They will fling them around freely, they'll throw them away unsafely, and it doesn't matter to them, because they can go back the next day and get as many more as they want. One-for-one ensures, hey, I'm not going to throw this on the ground, I'm going to put it back in my bag, or wherever they got it from, because they need more, they need them to get them back the next day, so they will be properly disposed of. Secondly, an amendment I'd like to see added is, we're looking for all this information in this data, I would like to see different colored caps or markings from where these needles are coming from, so if we find them next to a dead body, or if they're found in the streets, then we know where they came from in the first place. If these providers can prove that they're giving out 10,000 needles and 8,500 came back in, or maybe even more than 100%, that 1,200 came back in because they're labeled with the name of their organization, that gives us more data, and we're finding out, is this really reducing harm, or reducing waste, or anything else? But one-for-one seems to be the standard before COVID. We are after COVID. I don't know why we're feeding so many of these needles out into the community. Lastly, in the, depending on the numbers you use, we have 100 to 200 cases of Hep C in Maine a year. In the last two years, we've had 1,100 overdose deaths, not overdose deaths. So are we harm-reducing when Hep C is a treatable condition? So is AIDS now? Very few people die from it, as difficult of a diagnosis as it is. So we're trading overdose deaths for treatable diseases.
That's time, thank you.
Ronnie Parity, I just want something passed. What you guys are doing, are fighting, we're not getting anything. I would want to see Spurwink to get licensed by Lewiston. I went there, we need harm reduction now. We're losing the CDC. You're, we're seeing vaccines not being used by the feds and everything else. Let's get together and pass it. We can change the audience, but we need the first read and pass, and then the second read, and please, you guys have been just debating, and the second issue, waste, is a different issue. If you want a policy on waste, then do waste. Don't get it mixed up with licensing thing.
If I can ask you to just lower your voice, that would be great.
Okay, I'm excited, because I, I'm tired of this debate. You guys are delaying, you're delaying things, and we need it while you guys are on Council, because we don't know who's going to be on Council next thing. And what's going on at the CDC, it downs, I'm worried about harm reduction. And if, and I think you should put in the budget next year, somebody that can advise you on public health. We need a public health officer in this community, then we wouldn't be debating among people that don't know what they're doing. Thank you. I, you've got two issues here, and you need to put them separate. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Jones, Ward two. I have some disjointed notes from your discussion that I just wanted to share. I don't appreciate you rearranging the agenda. You get feedback about this regularly. People come to speak for a certain item, and here it is after 9:00 PM, and we're on item five. It's really arrogant to just ignore what the community tells you and do whatever you want, anyway. So I sit here and I question who most of you are representing. I've been requesting the emails that go to public comment. There are zero people using the service, begging you to keep the service going. Nobody is coming to you saying, we need more needles, we need more SSPs. They're needle distribution centers. Stop calling them pretty things. This is not harm reduction. This is harming all of Lewiston. More SSPs, unlimited SSPs, bring more drug users to the community. Does that match the vision for the Lewiston that you are trying to create? For months, we heard Counselor Chittam talk about the experts at Cozy, and we saw via email FOIA requests that she, the one who...
Please continue your public, please continue your public comment.
Ignored him for months. This has been going on for months while we waited for that expert to advise you, and now you're arguing about how many more experts we need in the community. None of this is improving Lewiston, not a single bit of it. We've tried the Sharps containers, they've failed. Like Brett said, please stop assisting people with their illicit drug use. I am six-plus years sober from alcohol. If somebody had said, here's a glass, here's ice, here's a mixer, all you need to do is go source your vodka, I'd be dead. You're helping kill people. You have spent countless hours discussing how to make Lewiston ideal for drug users, while completely disregarding everybody who does not interact drugs into their bodies.
Further public comment?
Yes, Martin Chartrand, resident of Ward five. I have spoken before on this, I want to draw on two points that have come up in the discussion about this ordinance. about this ordinance. Last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about how can the SSPs best support people seeking recovery? And I think you all have good intents on that. There was a lot of talk about having more contacts with people, and this being the way to better ensure people reach toward recovery. In my experience, I've worked with an SSP, and I work as a behavioral health professional. It's building relationships of trust that is the key, not exactly the amount of FaceTime or contact. And to build relationships of trust means working with people through the obstacles they face. There are lots of barriers to somebody accessing an SSP, from severe weather, which can have severe consequences if somebody's unhoused, to shame, or simply chaos in someone's life. As a harm reductionist, I would want to see every chance to connect with someone as a gift, and make the most of that. And causing inconveniences, like having to come back repeatedly because of a cap on needle distribution, or having to go long distances to only one spot, is going to make people less likely to have those connections, and to trust and build those relationships. I would strongly urge you to open up the possibility of more than one license, and to also open up the possibility of mobile units, because this is a way to increase the number of relationships that we're building in the community, and ultimately lead to better health and more recovery. I will also point out just briefly, because there's some discussion about the needles and the danger they pose as far as needle waste. I don't want lots of needles laying around. At the same time, I also know that the facts are that there are very few cases of disease transmission from community needle sticks, of discarded needles. In fact, one study found there's absolutely no chances of HIV that way.
That's time, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening. Man Farmer from the Maine CDC. I just wanted to reiterate a point that we had in a letter from our director, Dr. Va, on September 16th regarding the number of limiting the service providers. Limiting the number of service providers would likely limit the ability of providers to nimbly respond to the needs of the community. Removing the restrictions of two service providers would provide greater flexibility and enable the community to adapt to future needs, particularly if the two SSPs are not able, are unable to provide the full spectrum of the SSP coverage required to reduce harm in your area. Thank you.
Andrew Jones, Ward two. I also have just some comments I jotted down as you guys assessed this. First, I thought that this, this public comment was for limiting the licenses, so that'll be my first comment. I'm for limiting licenses to one or two. As the council, you have the option to come back later and say, no, we need more than two. You know, Tim had mentioned that, you know, the hospitals could possibly, you know, choose to operate like this, and that's something I'd support of, because hospitals actually give a damn about people. So if they started an exchange program, or started treating, that's something that I would support. So I support limiting the licenses to one or two. One's better, two, okay. You know, compromise. Josh, you said that quite a bit. I agree with that. Another thing I want to talk about is, David, you made a comment about this ordinance coming into effect because of Cozy. Where the hell have you been the last year? This was drafted up long before Cozy's issues were discovered. So this is not reactionary, this was proactive, and the constant dragging this out, this would have prevented Cozy, so shame on you for that. Another thing I want to talk about, Carl, you had mentioned moratoriums needing to be an item separate from the ordinance. I'm just curious why you let that conversation go on so long before you brought that up? Were you just sitting with that in your back pocket to derail that towards the end there? Just curious. You can figure that one out yourself. Yeah, one-for-one exchange, I would like to see that come back. You know, four of you voted to nix that. I'm really hoping that you reconsider and bring that back, because I strongly support that. Do what's best for the whole community, not just the special interests and the experts. Letting the experts do their own thing is what got us in this mess in the first place. So, thank you.
Matthew Egren, Ward four. Okay, let's start off with something. You guys had no issue at all making a snap decision at the end of a council meeting not too long ago, to end public hearing, a public comment on Lewiston's Facebook page without any public input. Yet this has taken eight months, drawn out. It's almost like you guys are trying to run out the clock, like a football team, and it's a bad look for all of you. Now, why we're really here. The state of Maine's DHS, who runs CDC, who professes to believe that in this method of harm reduction as a public health issue, only currently has nine state-certified SSPs operating in 20 sites, or 18 communities. Portland and Bangor have two each. I hate to say this, but if the state of Maine CDC truly believed this was a proper function of their organization, they would have opened up way more in the 457 communities that make up the state of Maine. Norway, Auburn, Brewer, Cape Elizabeth, Skowegen, Kenny Bunkport, Presque Isle, that would have helped share services around this state, so that people would not have to travel too far. We're talking about people having to travel too far here in Lewiston? We have people who were here last meeting talking about people coming down from Norway to use our SSPs. Traveling in Lewiston isn't that far if you're coming from Norway. Auburn just put in 180-day pause. Then the CDC, if they're going to continue this policy, needs to start communicating with municipalities, so that the city leadership is not blindset and can talk, allowing them to balance harm reduction and services with the interests of the cities, citizens, and taxpayers who they are elected to represent. And finally, a fun little fact here, if you believe the CDC, they claim in their SSP programs, 1.16 needles they give out, they get one back. So effectively, a one-to-one ratio works according to the CDC. And they wouldn't lie about anything, now would they? Now, we know that a mobile unit's going to have to come, and Director Connor said that that piece would follow once this ordinance was done. I think okaying any already licensed medical facility to host a mobile unit is a simple fix. They just need to have rules stating when and where they'll be, so that the city and residents will know. Thank you very much.
Further public comment?
Good evening, council members. My name is Courtney Gary Allen. I'm an Augusta City Councilor and an international and local drug policy expert. I'm here to just take a moment to center the trauma and experience that your community has gone through over the last year plus. I want to take a minute to just talk about harm reduction broadly. I think, and I recognize Counselor Sewell when she talks about the debate between harm reduction as an individual response, and a harm reduction as a community response. And I think what I have heard from your community, and I want to take a minute, I've been coming to visit you guys for the last six months, and I've fallen in love with Lewiston. You have a really special place that you live here. Harm reduction is a set of principles and values that reduces the harm associated with substance use. And your community, for too long, has had people and providers who have been centering individual harm, and not centering your community harm. And that is not what harm reduction is, and I'm so sorry that you experienced that. Harm reduction reduces the harm associated with substance use, and that is both about the individual person that has harm to them, and the community. And for too long, it's been one. And I'm sorry that our movement did that to you. And that is what I'm going to say, is that in the values and the principles of our work that I love and I have chosen to do as my life, it went wrong here. And that's what I'll leave you with. It is not within our values, and I hope that you won't throw the, what's that saying? Baby out with the bathwater? I don't know what that saying is, that's not my thing. Because I've seen it work, and I also want to thank you guys. You guys have been so helpful. Your hospital, Lewiston St. Mary's Hospital, right now is my go-to, right now. I run a community center, I run a low-income community center, a daytime drop-in space that I wish your community had, and it is beautiful, and I welcome you to join us there anytime, we're open Thursday through Monday from 12 to 8:00 PM. I've had a couple of councilors' visits. And when I can't find a detox bed, I go, I'm like, get in the car, we're going to St. Mary's right now. And your nurses in the ER in St. Mary's are my favorite people. So thank you for welcoming us as a service provider, and a place that I can trust to bring my folks when they're ready. And I'm sorry that this happened to you, and I hope that we can rebuild the trust that our, I don't, I'm going to stop talking on that one, but not the entire movement did what happened to you. And I'm sorry.
Thank you.
On behalf of the movement.
My name's Melissa Dunn. I'm a resident, a homeowner, in downtown Lewiston, and a community organizer. Lewiston has a trash issue, it's pretty known, whether it's litter or pet waste. And we could put all the receptacles all up in the world, it's really not going to change anything unless there's efforts being done for prevention education, and being intentional about that. Some of the work that I've done with the city was contracted work, paid contracted work for notifying about the winter parking ban. I did unpaid contracted work for the city of Lewiston for demolition notifications, to do lead poisoning prevention efforts.
Excuse me, is this pertaining?
Yes. Now, we can give the, now, we can give the cleaning kits, we can give the receptacles when doing those prevention efforts, but it's not going to, it's not going to happen without actually teaching people or doing those prevention educations, whether it's about safety, safe disposal, or whatever. What I'm hearing a lot around the conversation around harm reduction is that there's just a lot of conflating the message of community and substance users. Substance use exists in our community, they're our neighbors, and so with that experience, it's often that substance use is co-recurring, and that includes trauma. A lot of sexual assault survivors, a lot of domestic violence survivors. Really important to know the struggle that people who use substances might be visible. I'm concerned that business owners are minimizing survival, coping, and the trauma by silencing or railroading substance users. They know their needs best, they know what they need to do to cope, to survive. I fear that a moratorium would only delay an already complicated process. Now, I love people who use substances, and I also love people who thrill-seek, cheat, cyberstalk, or do some form of escapism, or to cope. The only difference is people in deep addiction are visible about their struggle and their pain. I think it's important for, as city councilors, and even city staff, including code enforcement, to consider going forward in conversations around this, is what is city business? What is micromanaging? What is policing? What is overpolicing? And what contributes to gentrification?
Further public comment? And back to the council. Madam Clerk, can you please read the amendment as you have it?
Sure. The amendment is to limit to one license, and it would be amending the section 22497A1, to limit to one license.
Thank you. Further comments from council before we take a vote? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward three?
No.
Ward four?
No.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
No.
Ward seven?
No.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
No.
Motion failed by a vote of two to five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are we ready to talk about zoning requirements, councilors? Councilor Herman?
I guess this kind of segues into it, but the hospitals have come up several times, both tonight and in other discussions. And, and I just wanted to point out that under the current zoning in this draft, both hospitals are zoned out of the area where SSPs would be allowed. I don't know if, if they would be able to pick up some of this, some of this work. I know they're, both of them are not really in sort of the expansion mode right now. They seem to be more in a, more retraction mode. But that's just one consideration, is that they're currently both zoned out of the area where they're allowed.
Further, are you able, Director Connor, to, we're pulling up the map?
I've got it, I just need the IT guys out back to pull it up on the big screen.
I think they're working on it, John.
Yep.
We have it, we have the map. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're looking at a map. Thank you so much. Further comments from the council? We're now, council-
We're here, we're here, here's a question.
Yes, Councilor Ennady, thank you.
So again, I'm just going to repeat this, because none, no one is willing to compromise here, and it's really, really upsetting me. As the party of the prevailing vote for the many-for-one, I do have the ability to pull that vote back, am I correct?
On the prevailing side, for, what is the, when you said the many-
So, when we voted for the many-for-one exchange?
The one-to-one exchange?
For the many-for-one, because we're, that's what we voted for. We removed the one-for-one restriction.
Remove the one-for-one language, yes, the less needed.
And I was a member of the prevailing vote on that.
Okay.
Correct? And so, I could revoke that, that support, am I correct?
You could propose a motion to reconsider-
Okay.
-that item. And then if that motion to reconsider passes the body, then the original motion, which is the removal of the one-to-one language, is then automatically backed before the body again for discussion and another vote.
Okay, so again, I don't want to have to use the nuclear option here, but if we're not going to accept that we do not want to bring another service provider into this community, and if we're not going to accept that the service provider that we currently have in our community is functioning correctly, and we support what they're doing, what are we doing right now? Again, if we cannot support the one SSP functioning in this community, I can pull that vote to support, to remove the one-for-one restriction. Because if it's going to be a Wild West, and anybody can just come into our community and do whatever they want, like, and I understand there's a licensing piece there, I get that. But I'm asking for, I am asking for a compromise piece here. You've got three people who have one particular position, you have three- You've got three people who have one particular position, you have three people who have another particular position. Can we get to a compromise by limiting the SSPs?
I mean, we just, we just voted on that. Like, we, that question's been answered.
So let's move the, move the que, let's, let's reconsider the one-for-one then.
Is that, is that a motion?
Yeah.
I second that.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have that?
I'm sorry. So, Councilor Nagy, seconded by Counselor Longchamp's to reconsider the motion that was approved at the last meeting regarding the language for the one-for-one exchange.
Yes. Seconded by Counselor Longchamp's.
Longchamp's, yes. Counselor Nagy and Counselor Longchamp's.
Sorry, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
To reconsider that language. And they're confer, Counselor Nagy is confirming that he voted on the prevailing side of that. I don't remember offhand, so.
And now that, that motion to reconsider is now on the floor, correct?
That would be the motion before you right now, is to reconsider. So the only thing that you're going to be discussing is the merits of the reconsideration of it.
Yes. If councilors can please keep their top, keep their comments remain, that would be great. Counselor Herman?
Thank you. I just want to mention that I, I didn't support the restriction to one license because that would basically freeze us where we currently are. It would not allow Spurwink to operate anything other than their current location, and I just don't, I don't think that that's going to meet the need in our city. Excuse me, I'm speaking right now. So I did not support the, the one-for-one, I'm sorry. I didn't support the restriction for one license because it would restrict Spurwink to their current location. They wouldn't be able to operate anything else, and I don't feel like that's going to meet the need in the city. I also don't, just philosophically, I don't really support the notion that we, we've, because we're, we're tired or we're bored, or we're, we've taken too long, that we would put something through that is incomplete or, or not fully considered because we can change it later. I just don't think philosophically that's a responsible position for a legislative body.
Counselor Glant?
Oh, help me. I believe we're discussing one-for-one. I didn't really catch everything that the council was talking about with the previous-
Point of order, we're discussing the motion to reconsider.
One-for-one? So let's stay with one-to-one?
Please continue, Counselor Glant. You have the floor.
Initially, and probably going to say the same, I was for the one-for-one. And again, as long as we have a caveat in there where it's going to be a limitation, I won't support one-for-one if we don't have, if they don't have, the SSP don't have the power of giving out more than one-for-one, literal. Okay? And especially when it comes to weekends, as they provide no weekend service. They did explain earlier on that they have a box that they do put things in, that people can come to if they need to, I believe, I remember that correctly, that they, that's available. But I would like to see something in this that would state along that line that a one-for-one would no more than 10 a day and 25 per weekend. Okay? I would support a one-for-one that way, not crippling them to the point the other way around, that, you know, there are, there's a way people coming back and forth.
Councilors, yeah, I would like to remind you right now, we're simply discussing whether we reconsider that previous vote or not. You know, I, one of the reasons why we've been here so long is because the council has waffled on many of these topics. We've gone back and forth. You know, our lovely Director Connor has rewritten his, handsome, has re, my apologies. You know, we've retooled this ordinance multiple times. I am not interested. I do not support reopening up this previous vote. It's, it's, I can't believe we're at this spot. Counselor, Counselor Chittam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reconsidering this motion merely prolongs what's already been an excruciating and painful long process. I am opposed to reconsidering the vote. I think the council spoke, albeit divided, and I think extending this by reconsidering that motion opens the door to continued reconsideration, continued debate. This has gone on a long time, and it's a good thing because we have been deliberating, although I'm becoming increasingly convinced that neither faction in this discussion is going to be able to successfully convince the other faction in this discussion of the rightness of its own views. So it's coming clear to me that this is an extremely polarizing ordinance, and I suspect that the council is going to split consistently.
Let's move the question.
Yeah, there you go.
Do we have a second to move the question?
Second.
Second. We have a second, Madam Clerk. We will now vote whether to move the question.
I think it's Counselor-
Sorry, Counselor Glant, followed by Counselor Longchamp's.
Thank you very much. So move to the questions. So, Counselor from Ward 3?
Can you please repeat what the motion is and what the nested motions above it are?
Sure. So the motion is to move the question, which is to stop the debate and to immediately vote on the question of, should the one-to-one item be reconsidered? If the reconsideration vote passes, then that would be on the floor immediately for discussion. So the, the motion before you is, should you move the question? Should you stop debate on the reconsideration motion?
So we've got the motion to move the question. Above that is the motion to reconsider, and to reconsider what exactly?
No, so the motion, the motion before you is to move the question, to stop debate. The, the motion that you would be stopping debate on is the motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
And the motion to reconsider is, should the council reconsider their vote on the one-to-one?
Okay, but then we still have the main motion-
After.
-after that, which is-
The ordinance itself.
-passage of this ordinance.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Okay. So we are currently voting to move the question, to stop debate on this.
And the only question pending before you would be reconsiderate, should the council reconsider the one-to-one?
Okay, just, just a moment.
Sure. Counselor from Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Please proceed with the next vote.
So the motion immediately before you is, is to reconsider the council's vote, previous vote on the one-to-one exchange. Do you want to reconsider that? Open the floor and talk about it again. So the motion before you now is to reconsider. Counselor from Ward 3?
So this is to reconsider that motion, but not to vote on that motion?
Correct. Just, do you want the council to talk about it again and vote on it again?
Okay. I vote no.
Okay. Counselor from Ward 3 is no. Counselor from Ward 4?
No.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
No.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four to three. So now the motion immediately before you is the one-to-one language and adding it back into the ordinance.
Counselor Sol?
I will be very quick, because I think you all know my stand on that, so I do support one-for-one.
Counselor Herman?
So we are now back to where we were two weeks ago, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll pass for you now.
Counselor Longchamp's?
Obviously, I would like to see the one-for-one, but Counselor Glant did suggest putting in there a 10 cap and then 25 for the weekend. I would like to put that in there.
Are you offering that as an amendment?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Second for that, Counselor Glant?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Could the counselor repeat that? I apologize.
Oh, sure.
Counselor Longchamp's?
If we could do a 10 cap, so they'd be allowed to get 10, right? If they bring back one? Is that how that goes, Counselor Glant? Daily? And then 25 for the weekend.
Thank you.
Counselor Nagy?
So we're at this point because we couldn't compromise, and I just want to make that clear. We're at this point because we couldn't compromise. We were in a position where we could have accepted the one SSP that is functioning in our community in, in a reputable manner, and we're going to pass an ordinance, we're possibly going to pass an ordinance that is going to be harmful under the guidance of what best practices are. So I really, really would encourage someone to, to consider not issuing more than one license in this community for this time. Otherwise, you're going to get a vote that's going to end up with a one-for-one and probably a cap.
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. I would like to read for the record an excerpt from the American Journal of Preventive Medicine. This is a peer-reviewed journal addressing this very topic. We have heard from the experts, and I'm not going to use air quotes when I use that term because I firmly believe that the people who have spoken to us about harm reduction know full well whereof they speak. This is a peer-reviewed article, and the quoted section, a section I'd like to read for the record is, "When people who ingest drugs," or in, it's late, "inject drugs are able to use a sterile syringe for each injection, HIV transmission can be reduced by almost 60%." There's a citation for that. "A survey of clients from 24 SSPs found that 61% of people who inject drugs, who attended SSPs with needs-based syringe distribution policies, obtained a sterile syringe for each reported injection compared with 26% of people who inject drugs accessing SSPs with a limited one-for-one syringe distribution policy, i.e. a one, one syringe for one distributed. Concerns that increasing access to syringes may increase the number of improperly discarded syringes in a community has not been substantiated by available evidence." And there's a citation for that, too. "I don't know how you can get more expert opinions than this peer-reviewed article by nine doctors who are experts in public health. This speaks to the very issue that we're trying to address here. Limiting exchange to one-to-one increases harm reduction, and I will share this with you so you can digest the statistics, and it has not been shown to decrease the number of discarded needles in a community." Thank you.
Counselor Herman?
Thank you. I'm just concerned about making amendments on the floor and, you know, bringing up numbers, numbered-
Councilors, if you can, if you have not been recognized, please don't speak. Counselor Herman, please continue.
I'm just concerned about bringing up amendments on the floor that, you know, none of us up here is a public health expert, and to, to sort of draw numbers out of the air as to this is what people need, and this is what they'll need for this period of time. I think it's, it's irresponsible, and it reminds me of a previous council where we, you know, we got into issues where councilors were offering amendments on the floor without, you know, without any research or vetting, and then people got up and spoke to how that, how that amendment was flawed, and that amendment had to be amended again, and then they spoke to how that amendment was not considering all the, all the, all the effects, and that had to be amended again. So I'm just concerned from a process standpoint that when we're talking about public health, that we are dictating specific numbers of things, numbers of syringes that can be given out, when we really don't have the, the expertise to be dictating those things.
Counselor Glant, did you-
I did have my arm up.
Back to you, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I'm not going one-for-one, as, as Counselor Longchamp said, if somebody brought one in, then they could give them 10. They showed up three times today with three different needles, they'd get 30. Okay? So we're not putting it in a situation where, you know, we're going to over-handicap somebody based on location and distance. And I understand this article, and like any article that's written, some of their facts are drawn as way back as 1989 and as current as 2021. That's a pretty big span, where they gather information together. And it, and I won't disagree the fact that hepatitis and AIDS and all those things are paramount in the sense that if we don't do this, they get a dirty needle, they could get a, a bad disease. Okay? I understand that as well. My concern is having a second option for a facility is more important, and having a limited, we can progress and watch, we're going to have a moratorium coming up to us there, or going to have something that, we can review this anytime somebody comes in. We want to move it forward, let's go to the next article, next item. We already agree it's going to be a four-three. So we can all, the fours raise their hands now and move on, and the three go the other way.
I call the votes around here, Counselor.
Go ahead.
Yes. Counselor Sol?
I just want to remind everybody that none of us up here are police officers, yet you seem to dictate their policy all the time, Counselor Herman. So what is the difference?
Counselors, I don't want to argue back and forth, so we're-
I'm just asking a question. He's saying we're not experts on the drug business. Well, he's not an expert in the police department. So he gives his advice, his opinions, we're doing the same. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Roy?
Thank you.
If the audience, members of the audience could please be quiet, I would deeply appreciate it. Counselor Roy?
So, my concern here is, if you feel that something is harmful, why would you vote for the harmful thing? That's the only thing I'm going to say.
My position hasn't changed on this from the beginning, so we do, we do not need this artificial cap. We don't, I'm just so surprised that we're here. Yeah, I urge the councilors to, to vote this down. Counselor, Counselor Nagy?
I just want to remind you, Mayor, thank you for recognizing me, that we're here because no one's willing to compromise. That's why we're here. We've got, we're creating a model that, you know, instead of taking the good and running with it and making it great, you know, we, it's just, no one will budge right now. And so, my hope is that somebody will be willing to budge on, on the licensing. That's all.
I now would like to go to public comment for this item.
Matt Roy, Ward 6. Well, the worst political setting one can make is not agreeing with themselves and then changing the mind, and Counselor Nagy talks about compromise. We wouldn't be here if he'd just compromised with himself two weeks ago, because this motion would have passed then. We wouldn't need a sixth, seventh, eighth meeting. The hypocrisy of these, of the council as a whole and individually, most, most of you actually, is astounding. It is well-known that the mayor and the council president have been holding the water for the failed service provider. Going back to the moratorium issue, moratorium is, would have been a pointless activity in charging the city attorney thousands of dollars to prepare that, just like it was in 2017, just wasn't with the last council. Because the state Health and Human Services would, no matter what you guys do, a, the state would have to license a SSP, so that would have been pointless and a waste of time and a failed policy. Again- Again, we've been, it's going to be 2026 the way we're going before this is actually resolved, which the arrogance of, you know, the presiding officer is astounding. Four years in, still doesn't know what he's doing. Good thing the city clerk is here, or we'd be here until next week every meeting, but thank you.
Further public comment?
Ronnie Pieretti. Listen, go back to the original one that you put on the agenda. Vote for that, and at least we get a first reading. Then go to the second reading, the next council, and let's get something passed. This is, you guys are just going at it, and nothing is getting done, and Mayor, you should not be going in on this issue. You're not one of the council as far as voting. So, please, please, vote on the original agenda item that came out, and let's get something done, okay? At least supporting spurring, okay? I went the spur, we've got to think about harm reduction. That's the most important thing. Then hire somebody for the staff to be your advisors, okay? And Scott, you're way off. You're not listening to public health at all.
Hello again, Catherine Ryder. We are very hopeful that we are going to continue to be in the business of saving lives and doing high-quality work with clinical integrity, ethics, and responsibility. I also want to offer, for the conversation's sake, that I just spoke to my colleague from the CDC, and under our current license, we have the ability to have other sites and/or a mobile unit with a one-week modification from the CDC. So, I'll just put that out there for your consideration.
Matthew Egren, Ward Four. Just like to remind you once more, from the CDC's, the state CDC's own webpage, when they talked about their SSPs, they get, for every 1.16 needle they send out, they get back one, which means even they're acknowledging a one-to-one system would work, because they wouldn't ever fudge any numbers at all, would they? Have a nice day.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. I guess, I don't have the language in front of me, because we had voted last meeting to take it out, but I'm just wondering what a one-to-one exchange ratio would look like, because I heard Counselor Glant saying, "I could bring in one needle and get ten, and then I could go back outside, and I could come back in with one more and get ten more." And I don't know that it is written that way. I think it is maybe ten per day. So, I just don't have that language in front of me, because we were working from an updated copy from last meeting. And I'm just concerned that that, restricting it that heavily will not end up meeting the need in the city.
Counselor Longchamp, did you? We can come back to you.
Thank you.
Counselor Chidham?
Yeah, I would also like a clarification from Counselor Glant's proposal. If I walk into an SSP with ten needles under the proposal, one-for-one to me means that I can walk out with no more than ten needles. What Counselor Glant has just proposed, and which I am more than willing to consider, is that if I walk in with one needle, I can walk out with ten, meaning if I walk in with ten needles, I can walk out with a hundred. If that is the cap that he is proposing, that to me sounds like the compromise that we seem ought to be working for, and I would very much vote in favor of that, in spite of the fact that I think it's not the city's business to get into the knickers of providers. However, if that's the motion, if I've understood that correctly, then I'm all in.
Madam Clerk, could you please repeat the motion on the table?
Sure, so the amendment before.
Amendment, sorry, yes.
Sure, sure, is to have it at a ten cap, ten needles to one on a daily basis, and twenty-five over the weekend.
Counselor Chidham, does that answer your question?
Well, it did until Counselor Glant just said to me, "on a daily basis." And I guess I still don't understand. If I walk in with a hundred needles and the cap is ten per needle, can I get a thousand needles in a day?
No.
That's fine with me. That's what we've been arguing about the entire time. I would like to see no limit, because I trust that the providers that we would license would use common sense. But if his proposal is a ten-for-one exchange, alternatively, one-for-ten, then end of discussion.
Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a ten per day, and when I said they could come back in again into the process, we already know that they record the individuals coming through with, you know, not necessarily their names, but some kind of way to identify it. They would see the person who's got their ten already, and they surely wouldn't give them another one. Okay? That would be the thought in that process. So, that's what I'm talking about. I believe, knowing what I know about the drug community, having a degree, as everybody keeps saying, nobody up here has no qualifications, in drug and alcohol addiction, through the University of Maine, no less, okay, that for us to compromise, as Counselor Nagy says, to get this thing down the road, to start it, okay, this whole thing is about starting a program. It doesn't mean we can't change it three months from now, that the providers, whoever they are, can't come and say, "That doesn't work. We need to have more opportunity, or give out more needles, or betters." Statistics come out from the people who know in the process. I want to get it started, so at least we can move down the road with what we're doing right now, okay? That's why my proposal says what it says. Once we get it started, then there's a possibility to correct, to modify, and to change. If we don't have a starting point, we can never change anything. And right now, we don't have a starting point. Thank you.
I would just like, for the public's benefit, you know, our experts and those who work in the field, like, have been very clear all along about the one-to-many. And so, and we were, you know, we had a majority last time, and now we're reconsidering. Like, their position has not changed. Counselor Roy?
Thank you. Majority of the people up here on this council said that they trust that provider to make the right decisions. And now, you're going back and saying one-for-one.
We need one provider.
I heard a counselor just say that he trusts that provider. So, why go backwards? You want to compromise? Put a cap on it for fifty a day. You know, that's not a hundred, right? So, if you're going to put a number out there that you want to compromise on, it's got to be higher than one-for-one. That's my thing. But you trust the provider. Majority of you said it, you trust the provider.
Counselor Longchamp?
Can we vote on that, please?
Vote on?
The question, like, can I move the question? Can we vote on the?
You can move the question.
Can we? Can I, please?
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Counselor Glant. Madam Clerk? Did you catch all that?
Yes, I did, thank you. Okay, so the motion before you is to move the question, Counselor, from Ward Three?
I'm still unclear as to what.
Just to vote on?
Motion is on here, because I don't believe any of Counselor Glant's proposals were incorporated into what is currently in front of us. So, what is currently in front of us?
The motion before you is to amend the one-to-one language and to have a ten-per-day cap, ten clean needles for one dirty needle turned in, and twenty-five needles over the weekend. And that is the amendment pending before you, moved by Counselor Longchamp and seconded by Counselor Glant. And so, the motion now before you is to move the question, stop debate on that, and then we would immediately go for the vote on the ten and the twenty-five formula.
Okay, I still have, I don't think that language is completely fleshed out to be something that we could put into place. So, I'll vote, I'll vote no on moving the question.
Counselor from Ward Three votes no. Ward Four?
Sure, yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
No.
I'm sorry, no?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor, from Ward Six is a no?
I wasn't definite enough. I'll be more definite. Definitely no.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor from Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to two. So, now, the motion immediately before you is the amendment regarding the ten-per-day exchange, twenty-five for the weekend. Counselor from Ward Three?
Would you be able to read the text of that amendment? Because it just seems very vague, and I'm not sure how that's going to be applied and how that can meet a standard for an ordinance.
Right, so, in the one-to-one language that was before you on the sixteenth, there's actually four different references to it in the ordinance, one being a definition, one just talking about the application, the applicant needs to verify that they're going to implement that, and then just references that they need to, operating requirements that they need to adhere to it, and they cannot change the procedure. So, basically, it would be the definition portion, I think, would be the main need of it.
But we're not talking about one-for-one right now. We're talking about the ten and twenty-five language.
Right.
I just don't know, and I don't have the copy in front of me where that language would go, because we took it out last time. So, I'm just unclear as to what, like, what we're actually voting on and where that goes in the ordinance and what that language is.
We're.
It just seems like something that needs to be either workshopped or discussed, or, you know, actually drafted into an ordinance rather than just amending things on the fly.
Madam Clerk, this is still the first reading, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yes, thank you. Please call the vote, Madam Clerk.
So, Counselor from Ward Three?
Could you please remind me what the motion is?
Sure. The motion before you is an amendment which would be amending the one-to-one language to change the language to ten needles per day and twenty-five per weekend.
But where does that go in the ordinance, and how does that fit with the one-for-one?
It would go.
Is what I'm not understanding.
Right, it would be altering the one-to-one definition, because the definition language that was removed mentions, a new enrollee may receive one package of clean syringes, program under which may provide a participant with a number of clean syringes that equals the number of used syringes that the participant provides. That would be the language, I'm guessing, that would be changed.
You're guessing?
I don't, I'm not sure. I mean, maybe Director Connors can help advise.
If I may, Madam Clerk, you know, staff will take this amendment and work it up into language in the ordinance, is that correct?
We would clean it up for you, yes.
Yes.
Apply it, yes.
Excellent, yes. And I would also like to reiterate, this is just the first reading, and we will have the complete text of this, whatever meeting we do the second reading at.
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Please call the vote, Madam Clerk.
Counselor from Ward Three?
So, is it one-for-one with a maximum of ten, or is it one-for-ten and twenty-five on Fridays? That's what I'm not clear on, and this is the issue that I brought up with making amendments on the floor, with not, you know, not considering the effects of them, not having them vetted or workshopped. I don't know what exactly we're voting on right now. And that's also the issue with ending debate on something. When counselors make amendments on the floor, then they end debate, so no one can get their questions answered about them. It's just not very effective legislating. So, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no on the amendment.
Okay, Counselor from Ward Three is no. Counselor from Ward Four?
No.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Using the same argument as Counselor Herrmann, no. I do not know what we're voting on.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
I also don't know what we're voting on. Again, can I get clarification? If you bring in one syringe, you get ten syringes.
Right.
But you're capping it at ten syringes per visit?
Correct.
And there's no, okay. I'm going to say no. I don't support that.
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Motion failed by voter three to four. So, the motion before you now is the original one-to-one language.
Thank you. We are now back to zoning questions. Do we still have the map up?
No, we're at the one-to-one.
I'm sorry, say it again.
It's the one-to-one language, because.
Oh, right, yes, yes, yes.
The motion to reconsider passed, so that's before you.
Thank you. Okay, so we did not move the question.
Will you move the question on the amendment of changing the number from one-to-one to ten-to-one?
Right.
Okay.
That vote on that amendment for ten-to-one fail.
Okay, now, we're at the one-to-one question.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Further comments or questions from the council? Yes, Counselor Sol?
Is there a proposed cap on the one-to-one from anyone? No, okay. No. Well, it failed the one-to-ten, but now, we're on one-to-one. Yeah, so they bring one, they get one, just with no cap. I really hate to do this to you all. Okay. I guess I have nothing to say at this point. I'm good with the one-to-one.
Counselor Herrmann?
So, to be clear, we're, the motion on the floor is to go back to the one-to-one language that we took out at the last meeting. Is that correct? And that would restrict people, so if somebody comes in with zero, they'll get zero. If they come in with eleven, they'll get ten, or they'll get eleven?
Eleven, one-to-one.
So, if they come in with seven-hundred-and-fifty, they'll get seven-hundred-and-fifty?
There you go, yeah.
Counselors.
Or there, is there?
Counselor Herrmann has the floor. Please continue, Counselor Herrmann.
I just don't, I think this process is very flawed to make, you know, to make these sort of amendments like this, and I just don't, I don't feel like it's effective to, you know, we had a process going where we had a draft from staff, we considered it at the last meeting, and now, we've gone round and round with all kinds of amendments, and I just don't feel like it's, this is working.
Counselor Longchamp?
Yes. Director Connors, is there a cap on the one-for-one? Like, is there a limit? Can people, I can't remember.
Not in this ordinance, but I believe that the state has a cap at a one-hundred.
Oh, okay.
And what I'm frantically looking for, and what I looked over at the clerk for, was the original, the original language had a zero-to-twenty for a new enrollee.
Yes, right.
And I don't know if that would be added back to it. Yep. Strict one-for-one, yep.
If it would help, Mr. Mayor, if you want to take a three-minute pause, I will go photocopy the old language, so you can have that one-to-one language in front of you.
I think we could use a three-minute pause regardless, so, thank you. We're going to take a brief recess on this. Thank you. Thank you.
This is the same one that was handed right out. This is the one that-
Hello, and we are back. We've now been provided copies, thank you to our fabulous Madam Clerk. Okay, here we are. Director Carney, did you want to say anything at this point?
I think we left off with just making the statement that the initial, an initial new client could receive 20 needles if they came in with zero needles to exchange. I think that was one of the questions that came up. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then the clerk graciously made it very easy and highlighted all of the locations where one-for-one is referenced in this draft ordinance.
Yes, thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, just for the public's benefit too, as they're tuning back in maybe at 10:21, can you just read back the ord- what motion is before us at this moment?
Sure. So the motion before you is the, is the one-to-one. And the motion that passed in the September 16th meeting was to delete the references to one-to-one. So the motion before you is to delete the one-to-one language in the ordinance, which is the four sections highlighted in yellow.
Okay, thank you. Yes, discussion among the council. Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. So I guess just to sort of ground us again, so are we discussing whether we want a one-for-one exchange or a moratorium on the number of licenses? Or what exactly are we discussing here? Because it seemed like it was sort of a, it was a trade, like either we get one or the other. And, yeah, so I guess if we could clarify that.
So, yeah, I'd be happy to. So it's, what's currently before us is what exactly, what Madam Clerk read. There was the vote to, the no vote to change it from, from two to one look, locations, or, sorry, licensees. And then the motion was made to reconsider this. So what's before us is a choice to whether we keep the one-to-one, or, I'm sorry, the one-to-many that we approved the last time, or we're heading back to where we started. Counselor Longchamp's.
Can I move the question to vote on this, or do we have to discuss it again?
You could move the question if there's a, and then we could see if there's a second.
Are you moving it?
Yes.
I second.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote. Sorry, that was, Counselor, Counselor Longchamp's vote, proposed moving the question, and Counselor Sol seconded it.
So the motion before you is to move the question, Counselor, from Word 3.
So are we, we're just gonna sit here and, and cut off debate every time we start talking about something? Because I thought we were talking about the one-to-one exchange now, but now we can't discuss it. I, I just don't understand what the outcome people are looking for is. I would like to make sure that this ordinance is as well-crafted as possible. And when people keep cutting debate off so that we cannot discuss any, any options in this ordinance, it's very frustrating to me as someone who's trying to craft legislation that when we cannot, we cannot-
Counselor, debate is over, and we are now voting.
We are debating an ordinance right now, and I cannot, we cannot ask questions about it, and we cannot talk about it. Because people keep trying to cut off debate so that we can't have a substantive discussion.
We have had-
I'm just not sure, we just got to this motion, and now we're trying to cut off debate on it without speaking about it.
The mo- the motion has been made, it has been seconded, now it's up for a vote. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 3.
Could you please repeat what we're voting on now?
Sure. The motion before you is to move the question.
Ridiculous. And what question is that?
To delete the references to the one-to-one exchange, the highlighted yellow language before you.
I don't understand, I don't understand why people do not want to do their jobs and talk about this ordinance.
That is not the question, Counselor Harriman, please vote.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
No.
To the clerk.
Unless you're counting, unless you're calling a point of order, but right now we're in the middle of a vote. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 3.
So this is to cut off debate on this question that we just opened? So we will not discuss this at all?
Correct. But pending the outcome of the vote.
This is ridiculous.
Still saying no.
I mean, how are we supposed to do our jobs if people keep hamstringing us and cutting off our ability to talk about the ordinance that we're trying to craft?
We have heard you, Counselor Harriman, please vote.
I'm voting no on this because I'd like to talk about the ordinance and make sure that we have the best possible product coming out of here. And when people keep derailing the process, we cannot do that.
Decorum, Counselor, decorum.
Voting no.
Counselor from Word 4?
No.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
No.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Okay, so the vote was four to three, but this requires a two-thirds vote, so it would have needed to receive a five to two vote, because the motion to stop debate is taking the rights away from the body. And anytime you take the rights away from the body, it requires your two-thirds vote, which would have needed a five to two vote, and it received a four to three vote, so the motion to move the question is failed.
The motion is failed. We are now returning to debate. Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. I would urge the counselors to please debate the question in front of us and discuss it, rather than try to cut off debate-
We are.
-and just push something through. I have not had a chance to even read this, and people are trying to cut off my ability to speak on it.
Further comments or questions from the council? Counselor Sol?
So I just want to be clear, and I apologize, Madam Clerk. I thought I heard you say this is for us to remove the language that's saying one-to-one in this draft.
That's, that's the motion that was approved at the September 16th meeting.
Yep.
The, at the September 16th meeting, the one-to-one language was included in the first passage, or the proposed first passage. The motion was to remove the one-to-one language, and that passed. So removing it, deleting it, so-
Today, right now?
From September 16th.
Oh, okay.
So the highlighted yellow was removed, because that was adopted by the council to remove that language on the 16th. So then the version that you got tonight did not have the one-to-one language, because the council voted on the 16th to take it out.
So we're voting to put it back in?
That's the, if you guys want to do that.
Okay.
That's the question before you.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Harriman.
So, looking at this language again, it mentions a strict one-for-one syringe exchange policy. So that says that a participant of the program may provide a participant with the number of clean syringes that equals the number of used syringes that the participant first provides to the program. Then notwithstanding the prior sentence, a new enrollee, which is a defined term under, that looks like a, not a statute, but a department rule, a new enrollee may receive one package of clean syringes without providing a used syringe, as long as that contains no more than 20. So if I'm a first-time enrollee, I could, and I have no syringes to exchange, I could get 20. But if I have already established myself with the program, and, and somebody takes my syringes, or I lose them, or, you know, I get detained by the police and they take them, or I go to a homeless shelter and they don't allow paraphernalia on the site, then the next day when I go to the SSP, I cannot get any. Is that, that, is that correct?
That is how the ordinance is written.
Correct.
They would have to find it some way.
And then this also gives no, this gives no consideration to the, the days of the week that the SSP operates. So if they operate, say, Monday through Friday, even if I can consistently bring in, let's say, let's say I bring in 15 each day, and I get another 15, once we get to Friday, I've only got that, that same number for the entire weekend until Monday when they open again. And, and this, another section of this ordinance prohibits SSPs from operating on weekends. So even if, even if the current one we have, which only operates Monday through Friday, even if they were to get funding or be able to expand their services, we would prohibit them from doing so. Is that correct?
According to the ordinance as it's written, yes.
Okay.
But in its current form.
Yeah, I just, I don't see this, I don't see this meeting the need that we have, and it's unfortunate that we've gotten to this point with, I just don't think this is an effective way to do business.
Counselor Glant.
Just wanted to direct to the city clerk to make sure I'm as clear as I'm not. We voted to reopen this particular item, correct?
Yes.
And then we kind of fobbed back and forth. But at no point have we yet voted to put this language that you highlighted back in yet. Technically, we're still on the language that was delivered to us today. Is that not correct?
The, the language before you that is highlighted in yellow, those four sections that are highlighted in yellow, the council voted on September 16th to remove.
That's correct.
And so then it was, there was a motion earlier in this evening by Counselor Nagin to reconsider that, which passed. So now it's immediately pending before you again. Do you, the decision before the council is, do you want to keep that, do you want to add that language back in, or keep it out?
That, that, so that's what I'm saying, is if we vote this down as a no, we're going back to what we had started with today, unlimited, basically.
Is that?
Yes.
Correct?
So, so the, the-
Motion is to remove?
The motion that was on the September 16th meeting that passed was to remove all references to one-to-one.
Correct.
So the motion before you right now is to remove all references to one-to-one, basically keep them removed essentially, because of the time span here, but to, to, so a yes vote would remove, would keep it out?
Right, so-
A no, sorry, if I may, Madam Clerk.
Please.
So a no vote on this current motion, we'd be right back where we started with earlier this evening, which, how was yesterday? Yes, yes.
That's-
That's a no vote.
So that's, I was looking for clarity on the simple, right now it's yes, put the yellow back in, no, leave the yellow out.
Like how we started with it in our packet.
Or the other way around.
Other way around.
Okay, so it's no, keeps the yellow in, and yes goes to what we started with today.
I think if it's an easier way to say it, please correct me if I'm wrong, is, the question would be is, do you want to delete references, all references to one-to-one? Is that?
And that motion's on the floor.
That would be on the floor, because that's what was voted on, on September 16th, and you, because it passed, so we took them out.
Right.
So the motion, the, it has already passed earlier this evening to reopen that discussion and have the discussion and whatever. So you're at that point now, and then you can discuss the merits of one-to-one, and should it remain removed, or should you add it back in?
That's what I want to get to. The merits of the question is, do we want to keep it or remove it? Thank you.
Yeah, so just, just for clarity, so a no vote, we would be back at what was in our packet, which was delivered us on Thursday. I have a question. Ernestine, can you come to the podium for a second? So I, I know we talked about no limits, but, or that's been mentioned, but in fact the state has a limit of 100, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you know, current, so I just can't show up and say, give me 100 needles, like, it's a conversation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if I, if I show up, if I present myself and I need needles, can you just very quickly walk me through that?
Sure, Mayor. If someone comes in and they're brand-new, which we've had a lot of in the last couple of months, then we're having a conversation with them first and foremost, in terms of talking about their use. How many times a day, what does that look like, et cetera. If they're coming in with no needles, and they're brand-new, we don't know much about them, then we are, usually, we're customizing that for what makes sense for them. And oftentimes, that's around 20, which is two packs of 10. And, but it can, obviously, we have that variance right now, as our guidelines are from the CDC, to be able to increase that up to 100. That doesn't happen very often.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm good for now.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, one does just not show up and say, give me 100 needles, and then they're like, here's the box. It's a conversation. I urge, I see no reason why we can't keep what we all thought was great when we voted on this. What, was that three weeks ago, Madam Clerk?
The 16th of September.
Yes, yes. And, and, yeah, I urge the council to, to vote this down, so we can be right back where we started with when we got the packet on Thursday. Further questions, comments from the council? Counselor Chittam?
The no vote would continue, would basically confirm our earlier vote, and the one-to-one references-
I'm looking at the minutes. So the motion was by Counsel Chittam, seconded by Counsel Harriman, to remove all references to the one-to-one exchange for syringe needles. So we've now brought it back for reconsideration. So it's my understanding that you're basically voting on this motion from back on the 16th all over again.
So the motion-
So if you want to remove all references to that, you know, that, to the one-to-one, a yes vote would do that.
The motion on the floor then is equivalent, equivalent to, shall we remove all references to one-to-one in the, in the draft ordinances?
That is correct, Counsel Chittam.
Thank you very much. I, I wanted clarification. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk again later.
Later.
If audience members could please refrain from laughing, that'd be great. Counselor Harriman, back to you.
Thank you. So it seemed like, it seemed like the, the question from some counselors was, either we have one-for-one, or we have one license. And I didn't want to restrict it to one license, because that means that we only have the one location. We have no mobile units, we have no other location. I, I don't know if that was the understanding of everybody, but I think that if we, for the time being, if we could restrict it to one provider, the one provider who we all seem to trust, I, I mean, I think that would, I think that's what people were maybe going for, but that wasn't what the language was. So I don't know how we would craft that language, but if, if other counselors are amenable to it, what if we, you know, we continue to take out the one-for-one policy, but we say one provider, I mean, we could even say up to two locations. I don't think they're gonna just start going wild and opening more locations in town. But if we restricted it to the one provider we currently have and trust, but allowed them to expand their operation, I feel like that would, that would get us a lot closer to meeting the need, and it would address the issues of trust that some counselors have, or, not necessarily trust, but just unknown with other entities coming in for that other license. So I just want to propose that, not as a formal motion, but just as an idea for counselors to consider as an alternative to something like this.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. As much as I hate to go backwards, we're going to go for a second. If the current SSP is authorized by the state to run multiple places or mobile places, does one license suffice? This question is for Director Carney.
According to the way this draft is written, they would need a separate license from the city. So we could use their same license that they have from the state. We would need to license them with the city, because the, the license would carry all of the inspections of the building, of the property, and, and the good neighbor policy. All of those things that you guys, you know, talked about would, would be enacted for that new location. So a new license, a new application, is how it's currently written.
What about if it's mobile? Out of their parking lot?
This, this ordinance does not speak to it. That's why the, the complexity of a mobile SSP is, is, has got so many nuances to it, that that's why we said we'd like to come back with a new one. Things like, what kind of vehicle can it be? Does it have to be marked? Where can it be parked? Can it be on private property, public property? All of those things need to be taken into consideration, and we just didn't have time to delve into it on this one.
No. And I, but I'm saying is, if that person or that entity had a valid license right now, and we had our new policy in place, do they need a whole new license because they are a mobile unit? Or does it fall like an umbrella underneath the current one?
I would say it does not fall under it right now, because this ordinance only speaks to a brick and mortar. Now, if the council wanted to say, we want to, it's a, it's a complete separate ordinance for a mobile SSP, and we want to issue two mobile SSP licenses, it's however you want that, that ordinance to be drafted. But this does not speak to mobiles whatsoever, and, and only speaks to the brick and mortars.
Sorry, got off subject, guys, I just had that running in my head.
Counselor Nagin.
So when we speak about the, the separate licenses for one provider, the state licensing is based on one provider can run multiple locations.
My understanding of the CDC's, that's, that's correct.
And the reason why we're specifying the separate licenses as opposed to limiting, like, for instance, if we wanted to say we have one provider, but that can have up to two separate locations, right? That wouldn't necessarily require two licenses if we wrote, if we rewrote it that way, correct?
You could rewrite it any way you'd like, if, if that's what you want to do, but as it's written currently, it's, they would need a separate license for a new location.
Okay.
Gentlemen, if I could just stop you for a moment. I'm sorry, your name again from the CDC.
I'm Anne Farber.
Anne. It sounded like you had some, some guidance here, if you could join us at the podium, just so.
I just wanted to give a clarification about the licensing components with it. So when an SSP is licensed in a permanent location, if you're going to request a secondary location with an municipality or a mobile location, you still do have to go through another certification within the state. So there is another modification for it, and a notification that would need to happen. Of course, this is having to go within whatever municipal licenses or ordinances there are as well. So I did just want to give that point of clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nagin, were you finished?
I think, for the most part, I'm just trying to answer some of the concerns that I think that Counselor Harriman has about the ability of, if we have just one provider in the community, how they can better respond to emergent needs or expansion pieces, which, in all honesty, I think we could probably get to at some point. I, you know, I would like to get something passed tonight. And, and again, my, my entire hook is one operator at the moment, or, or one-to-one, so.
Counselor Chittam?
First of all, I'd like to remind everybody that the provider that we have in Lewiston is legally operating right now, whether we, the only way it would not be legally operating is if we pass this ordinance and it exceeds the timeframe allowed for it to apply for a license. So we're not going to shut that provider down by not taking action tonight. So the urgency is, is not there. That's, that's the main point I wanted to make, is that we, nothing we do tonight will cause our sole trusted provider to close its doors. The other point I wanted to make, I think, is to clarify that this license is premises-based. And I think Ms. Farmer just said that, I was under the impression that a provider, a provider was certified by CDC, but I think I just heard her say that a provider is licensed by location. For example, our favorite provider, the one that has left town, COSI, worked in two different cities. It worked in Portland, and it worked in Lewiston. Did it have two certifications from Maine CDC?
I'm gonna, I want to get back to you on that piece with it. That is, I don't want to misspeak about the number of certifications. I just know that when the state did rescind those, I had to send letters to at least six different municipalities. And so you are correct that you are licensed at different locations at different points in time. So I, I, but I could give you who, how many I pulled for them, but I'd have to pull that and get it to you tomorrow.
I'm not concerned about the number. I'm trying to distinguish between licensing providers and licensing premises.
I license the, I guess, I don't want to be, I license the individual at the locations that they are. So like, an example would be that you can have, we have so many SSPs that have multiple locations in differently, within York County, and then they have a location in Hancock, but they have two different components. I have to have letters that go to the municipalities, I have to follow the same, like, rule-making components with that.
Okay, so that would comport then with the proposed ordinance here, that says every specific license within the city of Lewiston, every specific premise has to have a, have a separate license. I also want to point out that the first, the last lang, the last sentence of the first section in this article says, "Mobile units may not be licensed under this ordinance." To me, that means it's prohibited, and that mobile units may not be licensed. It's arguable as to whether a mobile unit coming into town could do so without a license, because it's silent on that. But we cannot issue a license to a mobile ordinance, a mobile facility. And I'm so sorry, it's, it's late, and this has been mind-numbingly troublesome. So a mobile unit may not be licensed by this ordinance. It could come in and operate under CDC guidelines, because we have no prohibition on mobile ordinances, on mobile units. Therefore, by that line of reasoning, if our trusted provider, Spurwink, wanted to operate a mobile unit in Lewiston, we would have no control over that. Is that correct?
The, the premise behind that, that verbiage was, was a prohibition. So because they're required to have a license under this ordinance to operate, that line was meant to include a prohibition. So under this ordinance, you cannot have a mobile ord, a mobile SSP. And to be an SSP in the city, you have to fall under this ordinance. And so the plan was to always have a second ordinance that addressed mobile SSP licenses all by itself. And so that was the intent of the language. If, if, if the language needs to be changed to, to make that prohibition, to, to meet the intent of this, then that would need to, to be made. But that's, that's what the intent was behind it.
Okay. I understand your intent. Okay. I understand your intent. Do you understand my interpretation?
I do.
Therefore, my point is made perfectly. This is what legislation, careful legislation is all about. It is considering the language, what it means, what it doesn't mean, and it does mean a nasty, long-prolonged process. If we're going to do it right, if we're just gonna slapdash something on the wall, then let's vote and go home.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Glenn, back to you.
Seeing how we're not dealing with mobiles, I want to move this question.
Thank you.
Please say it.
Second.
Do you have a second? Madam Clerk, can we move the question twice in the discussion?
Yes, because the first time it failed, so.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So I'm sorry, Counselor, from word seven, and who seconded?
Counselor Longchamp.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
So the motion before you is to move the question. Three, four, five, six, seven. Counselor from word three?
No.
Word four?
No.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
No.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
What's the question? I apologize. Could you, could you, again?
Sure. The motion before you is to move the question, which would stop discussion on the one-to-one motion.
Yes.
And Counselor from word two?
Yes.
So the motion failed because it received a vote of four to three, which was not a two-thirds vote, which was required to take rights away.
Is anybody gonna change their mind? I don't think we are.
No.
So at, at this point, it is 10:51. I would like to entertain a motion to table.
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Chittam, yes.
I move we table further discussion on this ordinance until our next council meeting.
Do we have a second for this? I, I believe that motion has failed.
I, I would second that. I'm sorry, my hand was off for seconding that.
Okay, all right, so.
I think, just to speak to that quickly, decision-making, bad decisions are made in exhaustion, so.
I, I do agree we're past our prime here. That was moved by.
Counselor Chittam?
Yes, Counselor Chittam, seconded by Counselor Najin. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please call the vote for that.
Counselor from word three?
Yes.
Word four?
This is to, to table?
This is to table, right. Thank you. Yes.
Word five?
No.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
Yes.
Word, excuse me, word two?
No.
Motion passed by vote of four to three.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Director Connor. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, I do believe that was all of our regular agenda items. Is that correct?
Yes. The next item for you is item number 10.
Yes. Public comment period for those who did not speak during the first public comment period. Public comment is now closed. We are now up to reports and updates from councilors. Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. School committee met last night. We had a discussion about staff turnover and retention rates. You may have seen, there's an article in the Sun Journal today. We were sort of at around 15% turnover before COVID. There was, there was a bit of a spike, you know, not so much right in the middle of the pandemic when people were remote, but then as we came back to in-person, there was a fairly large spike in turnover. And over the past three years, that has trended back down, and we're back down right about 15%. The other update I have is that this Thursday, the ninth, at the Green Ladel, 5:00 PM, there's going to be a sort of town hall-style presentation about Lewiston Public Schools' goals. And I understand that this will be, this will be streamed on the, the LPS YouTube channel, but the format of it will be more, it'll be more participatory. So if you, if you want to really participate, it makes more sense to go in-person. And that's all I've got for updates.
Yes, Counselor Chittam.
I have a request. I would like to schedule a workshop to have a report from Public Works on needle litter, how much needle litter there is in the municipality today, where the drop boxes are, whether there's, drop boxes are being maintained, how often they're being emptied, where the needles are, that sort of thing. I think we need that sort of information.
Counselors, the clarification, when you say workshop, is this something that could be an update as part of a regular meeting, or does this have to be a special?
I'm sorry, Mr. Administrator, it's late. I, I used the wrong word. I would like to have a report from Public Works.
Thank you.
Counselor Sol.
Are we up to other business? I'll wait.
Well, I mean, we're, we're still technically reports and updates, but saying no further, or, wait, Counselor Glenn.
County budget report, basically, it's an over 14% increase for us. We have one more day, possibly two, to hammer things out. Those up there still awake and still listening, please get ahold of your county representative, not just us here, but the Lewiston reps, so they understand the concern. It's a lot of money increase for us this year, and it's important that you let them know that we're not interested in, in paying 14%.
If I may add, that's a million dollars. Increase, increase of a million dollars for the city of Lewiston.
Thank you both. Counselor Sol.
Well, first, talk about kicking the can down the road. This is exactly what's happening with this ordinance, and I'm extremely frustrated. I would like to request, again, a workshop. I have requested many, and I keep being denied. This all would have been solved if we could have just had a workshop prior to this meeting. This could have all been hashed out. So I would like to request a workshop before the next meeting to give us time to go over this, so that when we come into the meeting, we're not going through this again. We're going on almost a year. October 31st is gonna be a year. And I understand things need to be done correctly, but this is a bit much. So I, I don't know what we have to do to get a workshop. I've been denied every time I've asked, so there it is. That's what I want.
I second that.
I also support.
I third.
I guess, sorry, did you have something else, Counselor Longchamp?
Can we get a workshop? Can we get an answer on that?
So that is determined by the mayor, the council president, and administration at our agenda meeting. So it can be discussed. I don't want to speak for the others.
I'm right here.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm still here. So do we have, are workshops already slated for the next meeting? Or are we trying? I guess, what are you asking for?
We're asking to add.
I'm asking for any day. I don't care if it's Sunday. But we have had workshops Tuesdays and Thursdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then all of a sudden, the budget's over, and workshops are unheard of. We could have had so much business done and complete, and yet we still, we sit and we wait, and we go every two weeks. And then we sit here, and we get brand-new rewrites all of a sudden, and then everybody has no idea what they want, and then it's tabled. And it's just really beyond ridiculous. So to not have a workshop is going to be a disservice to the city, because they are gonna continue to watch this. So.
I, sorry, if I may, councilors. So we, I, I mean, I'm not like, definitely opposed to workshops. We've had workshops on this, multiple workshops. The reason we're still here is because people keep changing their minds. And.
Never once changed.
Yes, no, I understand. Yeah, what is, are workshops already scheduled for the next meeting? Administrator Keanrath?
You're talking about the 6:00 PM time slot?
Yes, yes, sorry.
I don't think we have that. We'd have to look at the file.
It's not gonna be enough.
Counselor Najin, yes.
So I, just one piece. Four of us have indicated that we would like to see a workshop, so hopefully that, that allows us to, to make that happen. And also, I don't necessarily think the workshop should be coming before the meeting. It should be coming on a separate day, and it should be in a way that we can actually have a discussion, as opposed to the way that the council meeting rules work. Because ultimately, what's dragging this whole process out is, is, is the formalities of the meeting, and then the way that we go through this, without just talking to each other, in a public setting, to say, these are the things we support, and these are the things we don't support, so that we can work out the pieces in the middle that, that, that are malleable. That's all. That, that's, that's my suggestion. Whether it's a, like, let's say, next Tuesday, it could even be like, in, you know, at, at a different time to be convenient for, for more of this. I, I don't even know. Hopefully, only a couple of the staff would even have to be present for it.
Mr. Mayor, just.
Yes, well, Administrator Keanrath.
So our next, our next regularly scheduled council meeting, we do already have workshops reserved to the 6:00 PM time slot. So really, our next opportunity for a workshop would be a special meeting Tuesday, the 14th, to come back here and, and deal with just this issue in workshop. That's not a regular meeting date. That would be a special workshop.
Yeah, perhaps we could check with staff to see when it's available, and then decide tomorrow which day it is.
I'll just say, we can make staff available, or strongly encourage staff to be here. We, we will do whatever we can to make staff available.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry, Counselor Longchamp, yes.
So are you agreeing to have a workshop, you and the, and Counselor Chittam?
Can, the 14th is what day again?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Is everyone around?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Chittam, what does your schedule look like next Tuesday?
I have only a nine o'clock meeting in the morning.
All right. Right now, I want to say, barring, barring some scheduling thing that we don't know about, yeah, I, I think next Tuesday could work. We can check with staff and then confirm in the morning.
You're available. So I, I think we plan on Tuesday, the 14th, workshop, 6:00 PM?
Yes.
6:00 PM next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Harriman, yes.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could get an update, and, I mean, it could be an email, but I think it might be helpful for the public, an update on the downtown on-street parking, and the, I know we're in the process of removing meters and moving over to just a time-based enforcement system. And I'm just wondering, I've seen, I think it was on Middle Street, I saw the, the meters had been recently removed. Yeah, so I'm just wondering how far we are along in that process, and, and how that changeover is going.
Sure. Would you like that in the form of an email, or it could be an update at a future meeting, or?
I mean, I'd be fine with an email, but, you know, if it would be of enough value to the public, we could have a, a quick update at a meeting.
We could do both, even. We'll, we'll get an email out.
You, you could add that to your administrator's report. Director Connor, I, I see you're still here. You're, you're good for next Tuesday? Okay, we got a thumbs up from Director Connor. Further new business from the Counsel Harriman, yes?
Yeah, I also wanted to, I think we need to have a conversation sometime soon about the, the AI cameras that the police department has installed. I, I think that, given the sensitivity around the issue, and as well as, when I tried to get information about them, I kept getting conflicting information from staff. You know, I had one staff member tell me, this is the brand we're going with, this is the timeline. And then I got another email later that said, we haven't picked a brand, we, we got a grant, we haven't even moved on it. But then I noticed yesterday they've been installed already. I found at least five, or I, I found five around the city. So there are at least five already installed of the 14 that were, that were mentioned in the grant. So I, I just think we need to have, we need to have that conversation as a council and as a community, because we have never weighed in on, on that technology, and, and it's an important thing that a lot of people are concerned about.
Is that a request for an agenda item?
Yes, or, yeah, I guess an agenda item, because, you know, it's something that we, yeah, just a, a presentation from staff. I guess it doesn't necessarily, if there's nothing to vote on, quite yet, it doesn't need to be a, a vote, but it could be an informational update. I just think it's something that's, that we need to talk about, because I haven't quite gotten straight answers about it, and it's, it's a little concerning that it's already in place.
Administrator Keanrath, if I could suggest that you clarify with staff, and then just get back to us, and we can take it from there. Counselor Glenn, did you have something?
Just a quick, we did authorize MIS to buy new cameras this year and put them on the street during our budget process. Those could be what you're looking at, because the police use those, just for record. Also, they were told, I was told by them, that they received some free cameras to test out, to figure out which one they want to buy, and they have placed those in different areas for that reason, which would make sense.
Counselor Harriman, did you have something else to add?
Yes. Well, I have one more item, but the, these cameras that I noticed are from the brand Flock, which is, is known for AI license plate reader cameras. So it's just a little concerning that we haven't gotten information about them, and then when I tried to reach out about them, I, I got different answers from different people.
Understood. Administrator Keanrath will be giving us clarification.
Okay. And then my, my other item is, I think we need to develop a policy, or, or discuss whether this is contained under current policy about deletion of emails. I had an email that was sent to me by a staff member yesterday. Within a few minutes, that email was rescinded and taken out of my inbox before I was able to read it. And I've had a really hard time getting answers from staff, from administration about what was in that email. I, again, have been getting conflicting information. It was identical to the one that was sent later. Another person said, no, it was so flawed, that's why it had to be rescinded and taken out of my inbox. I'm just concerned about this from a FOA perspective. I finally, after dozens of emails back and forth, I got what was supposedly that original email, but it was identical to the one that was sent hours later. And it just doesn't pass the straight face test that if the email was so flawed, it had to be pulled out of my inbox before I could read it, why did the same email get sent later? So I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this, because I want to read all the emails that are sent to me. And I don't want them taken out of my inbox before I get to read them, and then there's no record of them. So I, I just want to know what, is that part of current policy? Or is that a policy we need to develop? I didn't even know that, that somebody could rescind a message that they've already sent to somebody else and not allow that person to read it. But apparently, that is a function of Outlook.
So I'm not fully.
How about Administrator Keanrath, if you can check in with MIS, and then look into that issue and then get back to us?
Yeah, but let me just say, I'm not familiar with the, the whole email chain. I haven't fully reviewed it, but I will. I will talk to the individuals involved, and maybe it's worth us getting a meeting together to resolve this fully, of what happened, when, and by who. We, we can do that.
Yeah, and I, I'm just concerned about it. Going forward, having access to all of the emails that have been sent to me, I don't know that this particular individual was at fault. I feel like possibly they were directed by somebody else. But the, yeah, it's just concerning to me that, that people can take emails out of my inbox before I read them, and now there's no record of that. And I, I would still like to know what was in that original email, because I don't really trust that the one that was sent that's identical to the one that was sent later is the original copy.
If we could talk more offline, and then figure out a way to fully look at this and resolve this, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Administrator Keanrath. Thank you, Counselor Harriman. I mean, one second. Are we, are we ready to adjourn, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
So we have.
I want to stick here. I want to stick around for another hour and a half.
New records, or, sorry.
We're, we're done with records this evening. Counselor Glenn, we have a motion to adjourn. Did we, did we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Counselor Sol, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six, and, and, Mr. Mayor, actually, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lewiston. Have a wonderful evening.